Please roll the roll.
Mr. Venira.
Here.
Mr. Sillier.
Here.
Mr. Alvarado. Now, for main candidates.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shor. Mr. Corvall. Mr. Bow.
Here.
Mr. Sinabria. Ms. Reifauer. Mr. Erich.
Here.
Mr. DiYazi.
Here.
Here.
Can I have a motion for the approval of the March 8, 2018, regular meeting, March 29, 2018, special meeting?
Make the motion.
Wait a second.
Second.
Let's go and roll.
Mr. Venira.
Yes.
Mr. Sillier.
Yes.
Now, for main candidates.
I abstain on the 8th, I'll vote yes on the 29th.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Bow.
No part on the 8th, and yes on the 29th.
On the chairman comments, Member Walsh, he brought something up, Jerry could like to point me today.
Okay, it's April, and one on the New Jersey website, the 2018 financial disclosure forms are up.
Use your microphone.
I was just saying, on the New Jersey website, the 2018 financial disclosure forms are up, all board members just need to go on and update the form for this year.
Yeah, members have to fill it out every year, financial disclosures with the state, and if you don't fill it out, you can get fined, so everybody try to do it in a timely manner. Thank you. Correspondence and payment of bills, any question or comments from anyone? Anything on the old business, anyone like to bring up? None of the new business?
Mr. Chairman, for PB 218-01, that's 354-374, Main Street, Austin Properties, I spoke to the attorney, and told him that this application will take the evening, and he has agreed to have us carry the application till our next meeting, and he has waived the applicable time period, so if you would make that announcement, so that no further notices would be needed, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, so this is going to be moved to our next regularly scheduled meeting, next month, May 10, without any further announcements. Applications before the board, we have the continuation of PB 2017-02-81, 179 Belmont Avenue, BOIV Belville MCM LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a mixed-use development, multifamily residential, and commercial use.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman Council, his name is Robert Cassio, the firm is Cassio, from Michael 524, Union Avenue, Belleville. I represent the advocate in this matter, BOIV Belville MCB LLC. My clients are the owners of 81-179 Belmont Avenue. As I indicated the last time, my client is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval in order to construct a misused development at the property on Belmont Avenue. The applicant is proposing that the one-story building remain, and two new buildings be constructed. The existing Masonville Building is about 55,000 square feet, and will continue to be used commercially. The proposed building A will have 4,500 or so square feet of commercial space, and 132 dwelling units. Proposed building B will have 1,500-plus square feet of commercial space, and 100 residential units. At the last hearing, you heard from Brian Stolar, the advocate representative, Scott Rasson, the architect, and Bob Byer, the site engineer. Tonight, you will hear from the planner, who originally...
150,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. 15,000 of...
Retained.
Of a commercial on that property, my apologies. Tonight, you'll hear from the planner, who I did not plan to call, because this is a compliant application. However, because of the questions raised about parking, despite the compliance to an excess, I will call Ed Colling to review parking. Bob Byer will be called back for just one or two questions. One, a question raised by Mr. Hands, with regard to turning radius at one spot on the site, and a question raised by one of the board members with regard to snow reward. Following Ed will be the LSRP, Craig Gendron. Next, you'll hear from the traffic expert, Craig Perrigoy, and the Latin class witness I plan to call as the landscape architect, Mark Vazini. I'd call Ed Colling as my first witness.
Sir, please raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name, please.
My name is Edward Colling, K-O-L-L-I-N-G.
Thank you.
Your occupation?
I am a licensed professional planner, in the city of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, I'm employed by Dresner-Robin, with our headquarters in Jersey City.
And by, for how long have you been practicing as a professional planner?
I graduated from Rutgers in 1974. My first job was in August of that year, as, in the Jersey Planning Division, and since then, I've been a planner the whole time, so it's almost 44 years now.
And just briefly give the board the benefit of some of your experience.
Well, after being a staff at Jersey City, planning for five or six years, actually, I became the director of planning for the city of Jersey City, where I served for about four years. I went into the private sector, and worked with a firm in Homestead, New Jersey, called Fellas Reading Associates. I then returned to the public sector, to the city of Elizabeth, and was the director of economic development in that city for 10 years, from 1989 to 1999. Again, went into the private sector, and I've been in the private sector since then. I've been...
Mr. Chairman, I submit...
Most experts with this, that's an expert.
Thank you, he's accepted as an expert in the field of planning. Mr. Colling, would you review your role in this project?
Well, as I said, I work for Dresner-Robin, and we are also the site engineers, landscape architects, and we put together the whole site plan. So, a large part of my role was to review the redevelopment plan, redevelopment regulations, provide some advice and oversight to the engineers and site designers, and to ensure that we would be compliant with the redevelopment plan.
And have you reviewed the proposal before the board for consistency with the redevelopment plan?
Yes, I have.
And what was the result of that review?
Well, we're, not surprisingly, since we attempted to comply, we have complied with the goals and objectives as well. I can run through them quickly. The first one speaks about effectuating the redevelopment of underutilized properties. This property, in my opinion, is underutilized today. If you look at the land assessment, it's actually higher than the improvement assessment, and that's not a good thing. You always want to have a least equal or the proven value greater. This will do, will do that, this will be a redevelopment of that property. The plan talks about the transition of properties to uses that are more compatible with the residential surroundings, with what we're in here, our residential land uses, and in addition, through the rearranging the site as it is, adding landscaping and buffering, I think we also, that way, become more compatible. Another goal is to capitalize on redevelopment areas proximity to the Silver Lake Light Rail Station. We're about 500 feet away, and that's exactly what this plan is developed for. It's the architect developed the unit types, and as we develop the location of the buildings, and where the proximity of the exit and entrance from the residential buildings would be, they provide for great accessibility to the light rail station. The plan encourages the development of a mixed-use neighborhood, and that's exactly what this is going to be. The buildings themselves will have a mixture of uses in them, but there's also the supermarket, a commercial building that's there, this is going to be a mixed-use community, and will help to support both the business and the residential aspects, because of the convenience to the residents of the commercial facilities, and also, the residents provide an additional market, so to speak, for the commercial that are there, and that should enhance that as well. Enhancing community appearance. Today, the site is, it's an older site, the paving is older, there's large areas of vacant land, that's all going to be converted to new buildings and landscaped areas, and again, I just think that the appearance is going to be greatly improved, improved. And then, ensure that redevelopment projects within the redevelopment area provide adequate facilities, including parking, resident amenities, and higher quality residential development, and that is what we're doing. We'll get into the parking a little bit more later, but we do exceed the parking requirements by 125 spaces, so I think we are more than, more than adequate. And then, provide for the redevelopment of the redevelopment manner that's consistent with the Belleville Township Master Plan, Essex County Master Plan, and the state redevelopment plan. And that's a matter of law. Redevelopment plans always have to be that way. If you look at your redevelopment plan, there's a whole section at the end that specifies or stipulates how it is consistent with that, and so, our development is as well.
And you've indicated, obviously, the development is consistent with the zoning of the redevelopment plan. How about the bulk requirements, are they complied with?
Yes, yes, we have no variances from the bulk requirements, we meet the height, we meet the setbacks, we meet the land coverage, building coverage requirements, we are compliant.
And did you, subject with the last meeting, have a discussion with your clients, wherein they advised you that there had been a question or two raised with regard to adequacy of parking?
Yes.
And as a result of that, did you do some studies in conjunction with that?
Yes, I did some, just some sort of general looking at some of the literature that's out there, also from my own experience as an urban planner over the years, and then did some more specific, detailed analysis of census data.
And did you, during the course of those studies, determine that there's a decline in auto ownership in New Jersey, and in particular, this area of New Jersey?
Yes, I mean, in general, I think in any urban area, in any areas that will find new, good public transportation, there's a distinct decline in automobile usage, in automobile ownership, especially of the younger generation, what is referred to commonly as millennials, it's just a whole different approach that they have. If I can go into that a little bit, you'll find that the millennial population, they are less likely to even get driver licenses. They take fewer trips, and they're shorter trips. Recent article I read was that, over the last few years, number of miles driven by people under 34 actually dropped by 23 percent. They just don't drive as much or as far. Younger people are more likely to get around by alternative means. They'll walk, they'll bike, they'll transit, they'll use their skateboard, and I see that all the time in some of the communities that I work in and I live in. A research group called the Frontier Group, found that public transportation is up about 40 percent among that age group, bicycling is up by 24 percent. And there are several reasons why this is occurring, just to think about it. There's the economic part. The cost of driving has gone up, it's expensive to drive a car, it's expensive to make car payments, it's expensive to make insurance payments, you have the rising cost of gasoline, and of course, the cost of maintenance. So, they are opting more and more for not only a car, because it makes more money available for their housing, or entertainment, or vacations, or other lifestyle enhancements. So, they're just figuring, I'd rather spend the money on me, I'd rather spend the money on lifestyles, rather than spending my money on a piece of steel, than this technology. This generation is very much into their cell phones, the pads, all the apps, and right now, there's ride sharing, like Uber and Lyft, so you can summon a car from your phone. There's car sharing facilities, Zip Cars out there, people have heard of that, but Perks, Enterprise, several others are launching businesses just like that, so it's more and more prevalent, and it's easy enough to get, and to reserve cars that way. Technology also bolsters the use of mass transit, because you can go right on your phone, you can look up when the next train is coming, when the bus schedules are, or things like that, so you can much more easily use even mass transit with the technology that's out there. And then, there's also all this social media. There were some studies that indicate that the people of that generation, rather than actually physical zones to someone's home, visiting, they'll do it by Skyping, or some webcams, or things of that nature, and they're able to have social interaction without even having to leave their apartment. So, then there's the cultural part of it, among young people. They are deciding to live in transit-oriented areas, rather than in areas that are more further out from good transportation. More likely to live in denser, transit-oriented neighborhoods. So, they suggest that they want, prefer to live in places that's easily walkable, where you can bike, where you can take public transportation, prefer cities over suburbs, apartment living over detached homes, because of less maintenance and such, and walkable places over driver places. It's just the way that the world has gone. Cars are not as important to them, they value their smartphone, and their pads, and their laptops, more. It's not a symbol of, status symbol to own a car, and a lot of these kids. So, there's really a genuine cultural shift, which I don't think is going to change in the near future. And then, there's even the idea of... They're more in touch with the environment, and rather than by not driving, they're making a lesser impact on the environment. So, that's another thing that goes into it. So, again, I think it's really more of a true cultural shift. That's the way that this plan has been developed, tried to appeal to that market, where people like that. People who live in this, if you're a person or family that has a retirement, you're not going to rent in this place, you're going to look for a place that has more cars. This is a transit-oriented development, it's the market for transit-oriented development, and therefore, we anticipate a significant portion of the people who live here won't even have a car.
You've obviously thoroughly explained the decline in auto ownership. Do you have any statistics to support your statements that there is this decline?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And you'll find this, if we look at the US Census Bureau, the American Fact Finder database, you can look up, they're what they call tenure by vehicles available for occupied groups, and they break down how many housing units have zero vehicles, one, two, three. And surprisingly, you'll find that in almost every community, there's a significant percentage that have zero cars. In looking at Belleville as an overall number, there's 12 percent of households in Belleville with no vehicles, 55 percent with one car, 20 percent with two cars, and only 5 percent with three or more. Now, that's a weighted average of about 1.3 per unit, but that's not taking into account the unit sizes, unit types, a lot of the units that this was studied in this, we include detached homes, and things where there's larger families, and so you'd expect to have greater homeownership, I mean, car ownership. But when we look specifically at Silver Lake, and Silver Lake actually has its own designation as a census place, and because I guess it's a recognized neighborhood, in that location, 34 percent of the households, along the renter population, not the ownership population, but the rental population, this is a big, 34 percent had no vehicles. 47 percent had only one car, and 19 percent had two vehicles. No households had vehicles. So, that weighted average is only 0.85. We've designed this to have as much as one car per household, we don't think we're going to need that, but the number of spaces that are there can accommodate that, so if there's a household with two, there's probably going to be several households with none, and that will be done through a parking management plan. Obviously, everybody who moves into this apartment complex is going to have to sign a lease, they're going to have to tell the residential where their vehicles are, the management is going to be able to monitor it, and they'll be able to manage the parking in that way. So, I think that when you look at all those factors, the proximity of this to the light rail station, the unit sizes, and how they would be marketed, what population they're being marketed to, I think there's really well more than enough parking in this location, and certainly enough to also accommodate any visitors for the commercial, because we exceed the requirement, the total of 125 spaces.
And can you tell the board the source of that information with regard to number of vehicles owned by renters?
It does, it comes from the US Census Bureau, they take part of the surveys that are filled out, again, this substantive data called the tenure by vehicles availability, and a segment of the Census Bureau known as the American Community Survey, they continuously update that number, and do estimates, and include updated population statistics, housing statistics, and others, other data, such as the automobile ownership.
And would you just tell the board what conclusions you have reached with regard to this application?
Well, you know, from a planning perspective, I think it's perfectly suited for this location. I think it's, if you look at, and if you look at your master plan, the master plan that was prepared in 2009, there's actually a specific reference to this property, or this area, including this property, and a specific reference to looking at transit village-type development. So, it's consistent with master, you know, this wasn't just something that was made up out of thin air, it's consistent with the master plan that you've had in place for, you know, a few years now, more than a few years, essentially. So, we have consistency with the redevelopment objectives, consistency with the master plan, and also, it's perfectly geared for transit-oriented development, because of proximity to the station, and in addition, it needs all the bulk criteria, so it's just a well-done plan.
And no further questions, any questions?
Any more numbers?
I listened intently about your parking situation, and if you drive around Belleville at night, in Silver Lake, all over the town, you can't fit a car on a street in this town with a shoe on. You know, and, like, they're only saying you need 100 and some odd cars, and they're going to regulate it, and they're going to sign leases, and they're going to sign that. So, you go rent an apartment there, and you sign a lease that you only can have one car. Well, that's fine, because the rest of the people that are going to live there, that have more than one car, are just going to park on the street. You know, you're saying the millennials and all that, my nephews are millennials, and they both own cars, so's my niece. I mean, the house next door to me has six cars in their driveway. The people who just moved in across the street from me have four cars, two fit in their driveway, two fit on the street.
Mr. Colling, you live in a residential neighborhood, not an apartment neighborhood.
It doesn't matter, Bob, you have an apartment here, that's been here for almost 100 years on Rutgers and Washington Avenue, and you can't find a parking space anywhere on Rutgers Street, you can't find a parking space on Lincoln Terrace, you can't find a parking space on Hornblower, because they don't have enough parking from when they were built, and now they're spread out all over the streets. I don't think the parking's going to work there.
First, the light rail is not next to Lincoln Terrace.
Yeah, I know that.
Second, these are hard statistics that were given to you with regard to number of vehicles owned by people in Silver Lake that are renters. You can check the statistics out. You're talking about 34 percent of the people who live in Silver Lake, and are tenants, don't own a car?
I don't believe that.
Well, it comes from the census statistics.
The census, the census can't find people, let alone make records of them.
Oh, they make a tremendous effort to find people.
Yeah, all right. That's all I have.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes, I also listened, and your argument is a good argument for census lower car ownership is going to be less need for parking. Just like in Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. If you put in these 100 and somewhat extra parking spaces, you're going to find that people are going to the miss, the light rail station, and using those extra spaces as a parking lot.
We understand that that's a possibility, and again, it's part of parking that. No commercial user, no retail owner wants to have people parking in front of their store once in a time, because they want their customers to park there. So, the management of this facility, they're going to monitor that, and they will not allow that to happen. It may happen once, they may have warnings, you know, however they happen to do it, that will be taken care of through management.
They're surely not going to let their tenants be deprived of physical access by letting people park there all day and use the light rail. It would be easy to monitor that. You can't. You can monitor it very easily, and then tow them away.
I tell you, on a daily basis, and I could tell you, I don't ever see anybody parking there all day. I mean, I go by there a couple times a day, and nobody's doing it now. The supermarket has, you know, a few cars, and I don't see anybody parking their car getting on the light rail. So, right now, I don't feel that would be a concern.
Any other board members? No, the board members have questions. We'll open it to the public, for questions only. Questions only, this witness.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. During Mr. Colling's testimony, he made a very articulate argument that a large part of the demographic to be attracted to this complex would be millennials. And he went on to say that millennials, because they're younger, are more attuned to environmental concerns, and as a result, have fewer cars, they're trying to make a lesser carbon footprint. But I find it very poetically ironic, if not disingenuous, that the same millennials who are so concerned about the environment would elect to live on a site that is an active DEP contamination site. So, I'm trying to reconcile their interest to minimize their carbon imprint by wanting to live on a site that is...
Obviously, that was not the testimony of this witness. He testified with regard to parking, and that's beyond the scope of cross-examination, if it's cross-examination, and it's testifying at the wrong time if the gentleman is testifying.
Well, then, I'll frame it as a question. How do you reconcile millennials, as you said, who are very environmentally conscious, wanting to live on a site that is potentially a major biohazard?
To the best of my knowledge, it's not a potential hazard.
Well, it's understood why the New Jersey DEP is an active environmental...
And what we have here, and who will testify later, is a licensed site remediation professional who will address that and explain how it will be remediated, and will not be a hazard to a resident population.
We'll talk about this more later this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Franté.
Yes, Mr. Colling, I guess you visited the site?
Yes.
When?
I can't recall exactly when.
You give me the dates of week?
Weekdays.
I have it. You said he remembers, he can't recall exactly.
Well, he just said weekday. My follow-up question, not the exact date, but what day? Said weekday. And you've reviewed this whole plan?
Yes.
Okay. The, one part of plan is shared parking, are you familiar with that?
Yes, we have, there is, the plan itself, the redevelopment plan, can refer to that versus the paper plans here, refers to encouraging shared parking. We have provided adequate parking for both the residential uses and the commercial uses. However, in certain instances, if there's a need for additional parking, say for visitors or something, there's an ability for someone visiting a resident park in part of some of the commercial spaces, that's what we would be referring to as shared parking.
All right, well, there's testimony, I don't know if you're aware of it, that the parking requirements were met because of shared parking, which means the...
I don't think that's a proper phrase, I do not recall that.
Can you finish my question?
I don't, you're stating a misstep, that was not what was said by the witnesses.
The plan, the food store and the apartments, will share certain parking places there.
No. We make the parking...
I guess you're on shot net, I mean, that was testified.
There's no question there could be shared parking, but that is not what was said, that there was inadequate parking. There's more than adequate parking, we more than comply with the parking requirements. The shared parking is not necessary to comply, but, shared parking makes it even better should some circumstance come up that requires additional parking. but shared parking makes it even better should some circumstance come up that requires additional parking.
Oh, unless I wrote the notes down, like your experts testified that the way you comply with shared parking, I mean with the parking requirements, because they're going to be shared. The, between the food store...
Nobody testified to that, to my recollection. My memory is not infallible, but nobody testified to that, to my recollection.
Well, the, I mean, when is your plan? When is the busiest shopping day of the week?
Typically on Saturdays.
And is the, the public, the average people, the average work week is Monday to Friday?
Yes.
So most people will be home on Saturdays, and that will be the busiest shopping day. There was also something by the owner, the developer, that there will be, I think he used the word share, but the way he said it, the cars are going to be parked there, and when they, and if somebody wanted to use them, there'd be a rental fee of like $14 a day, about, he estimated. Are you aware of that situation?
If there was, that's typically, as I was referring to in my testimony, a company called Zip Cars. I think Hertz has a company, has a version of theirs called Quonop Cars and things like that. But yes, that is something that you subscribe to. And if you don't own a car, you have the right to use it and be able to reserve it, usually through your laptop, your pad, your cellphone, and you can use it. I don't know if the fees are, but that would be outside.
Well, where did my daughter work for Hertz when they introduced that program? The question is, where are they going to be parked, and how many will there be there?
He did not testify to that. He's not going here, is that what he was going to say? No, he didn't testify to that.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is she aware of it? You're, the developer testified to it.
He said he's aware of the concept.
The developer testified.
He did.
Right, so I'm asking him. He could say he don't know, but let him answer the question. Are you aware of those cars? He's aware that, that those cars are available. Now, the owner said, I'm asking if he's aware of what the owner, the developer testified to.
The redevelopment plan permits that. They doesn't, does not require it. And I think that would be something that would be more properly answered by the owner because the owner's going to be the one who's going to manage the parking situation and therefore determine where those vehicles are.
Okay, so you can answer the question of how many and where those rental cars will be, zip cars or whatever they're called. You also mentioned this, the Belleville car ownership study referred to the census. The last census figures we had available, unless I missed something, is 2008 years ago, correct?
Right.
Not 2000, 2010.
2010, eight years ago, right?
Yes.
So a lot of things changed.
Typically, if you look back at the census study, you'll see, you'll see things that they're fairly consistent over time, or if they change, they don't change dramatically. It's evolutionary, not revolutionary. So you'll see some, certain consistency. I would doubt very much if the numbers are radically different. Today, if anything, I think it would be less car ownership, because that's different.
Okay, so are you aware of how the census gets those figures?
Well, I've never been a census collector, but they, they pay surveys, they send out surveys. I've had people come to my door and ask me questions, so...
And you fill it out, right? But I've got them too. So when you get it, you put there, they answer various factors. If you own a car, that's what you're talking about. Okay. If somebody has a rental car, and it's not in his name, would that get counted in there? How would you count that, some of that rental car?
I, I don't, I don't know how, how someone would decide to do something like that. If it is my own car, say, yes, I have a car. Some may say, no, I don't own a car. Maybe they only have it for a limited duration, and they would say, no, we're not. And that, those, that, that variation in the statistics is inconsequential. And I don't think that would make a good picture. We're talking about a survey of thousands and thousands and hundreds of thousands of people. So if there's a person that hasn't had a rental car that, that particular month, I don't think that's going to make a substantial difference in the statistics.
Alright, I believe you just said the store owners are concerned about their business, and they will not allow parking, parking on their storefronts.
They would, obviously, they would prefer not to have non, non-patrons take up the spaces in front of their store because they're only a business of selling goods and services to the general public. So they'd rather leave those spaces the closest to their stores available for that. And I think that's accounted for in the design in where the residential parking is located to the perimeter of the site and within the, within the residential buildings. And the commercial parking that's in front of the stores is laid out in such a way that it's more accessible to the people who live in front of the stores.
I agree with you. As a store owner, I don't want to park on front of my store. Thank you.
Adam, second?
Mary Higgins, 148 Wright Avenue. Maybe you said this before, but I may have missed it. How many parking stalls would we provide for the rental units in total?
Well, we have one space for every, every unit allocated.
Can you just give me the total number?
232.
232 parking stalls for the rental car? Okay, 232, thank you. Okay, how about for the, the proposed retail businesses on the ground floor? How many parking spaces?
Obviously, this witness didn't testify as to total number of parking spaces. He'll do the best he can, but that testimony was put in by the engineer as a...
Do you know that number, counsel, to help us out?
The total is, I think, 489 between the two officials.
I, I want to know for the retail space, how many parking spaces?
If, if there are 480, I think I have 487.
487?
Altogether, 232 have been allocated for the residential, and that would leave 255 for the commercial. Now, as I said, as I said, this is all, this, this hench, it's a, it's all of how the parking is managed. So if, if we are correct, and I think we are, and 232 cars aren't there for the residents, some of those spaces could be used for other purposes, which could be for the more commercial parking, or for shared use parking. There's any number of things. So we, we, we meet the criteria for both the commercial and the residential uses, and we exceed the total by 145.
So for the entire land, including the grocery store, would be 487, correct?
487.
Okay, thank you, because the numbers keep shifting around. All right, may I ask another question?
Sure.
All right. What's the projection for the ingress and egress of cars in the parking lot onto Belmont, say during a typical weekday?
Objection. That question, that was testified to by the engineer, or we testified to by the traffic expert. This was the plan.
Was the answer given already? By somebody else?
That's the testimony wasn't given yet, after this witness.
The ingress and egress was described by the engineer. The traffic expert will be the next to the last witness. If you heard my opening, I said there'd be a traffic expert as witness.
Oh, but you're the master planner, correct?
He is a planner.
Not asking, you can't.
Ms. Higgins, Higgins, if you would just treat our applicant with respect, please.
Are you the master planner, site planner?
I'm not, I'm not the master planner.
Okay, what's your expertise in that? If you can't answer a question about cars going in and out of the lot?
Ms. Higgins, that's going to be answered by the traffic expert.
Okay, thank you.
If you can answer that later, thank you.
He's next, right, traffic expert?
I think he's next to last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question 132 Franklin Street. In regards to this lovely property, and all these people that are taking the light rail system, which is a lovely system, have you personally ever taken it?
I haven't taken this system, but I've taken the Hudson Bergen system.
Okay, lovely. I would suggest all of you take that. But now, all of these pipe dreams that they think that people are going to be coming down to going to taking the light rail system, where are these people going to park? If they're coming from other locations?
It's for the residents. Saying the residents are going to use it.
Okay, so, you know, I don't know if anyone can answer this, but is, as an example, you know, Mr. Gashon said, oh, you know, apartments, you know, they, they took the, the statistics from, you know. I, we live in an apartment, okay? And believe me, there's more than one car in each apartment. But again, if all these, if, if you're marketing this as a transportation hub, and you want people to use it as a transportation hub with conjunction with New Jersey Transit, where are all these people going to park their cars that are coming in? As an example, if...
Objection, Mr. Chairman. We're not providing parking for people that are using the light rail. We're providing parking for our residents.
Yeah, the light rails are already existing, it's there.
Right, no, I understand that.
And you're not going to open up the parking to strangers. The parking's going to be for residents and patrons of the stores, not for... Yes, thank you.
Well, to follow up on the young lady.
Your name?
David Genior, 6 Essex Street.
Thank you.
How are you going to keep these light rail drivers who've come to this transit location from parking in this facility?
That question was asked and answered.
I'm asking the...
The question was asked by another...
They said management, management is going to...
Mr. Venero, you're the chair?
If management is going to...
It's your job to see that the residents of Belleville are allowed to ask questions of the witnesses. This man right here.
The question was answered, right?
And all I see here is you're answering for the plaintiff. Then we're having, when we ask a question of a witness, we have this gentleman, the attorney, the paid, I don't know what you get, $300, $400, $500 per hour, to interrupt and now let, let her answer questions. So why do you even have this question answered, period?
We open up to the public, and you're, you have to listen. The questions were answered. What was your question? They said management would monitor it. They're not going to let people park there. There's nobody parking there now, there's no light rail.
How are you going to keep people out of the grocery store parking lot? People, when they get wise to it, you can't find parking anywhere in the neighborhood.
Are you familiar with that area?
Yeah.
There's no parking in that area? Do you drive through here and find no parking?
It's very difficult.
Really? Because I drive out, I live two blocks from there, and I work about a half a mile from there. And I don't ever see a problem with parking there.
Now, can I...
At this time.
Can I point out what you're doing right now, Mr. Chairman? You're advocating for the problem.
I'm not, I'm just trying to say in facts. You're saying that there's no parking there now. I drive by it on a daily basis, and I, I don't feel that that's a problem right now, that there's no parking at that store now.
I mean...
Just from my personal experience.
For the grocery store?
Right.
But hopefully, the grocery store's going to be an improvement, right? Isn't it going to be upgraded?
Part of the plan is to improve the appearance, the facade, and the parking lot and...
I thought you, as the planner, kind of oversaw the whole thing, the engineering, the architecture. Is that true?
No. The, I would not be able to, to deal with the...
You really, you've never ridden the, you've never ridden the New Jersey Transit?
I have ridden the New Jersey Transit, I haven't ridden that particular line at that particular...
Light rail?
Right, I've ridden, I've ridden the light rail.
Seems like you haven't really been to the property recently. You don't know the neighborhood.
You're just making things up.
You do know the neighborhood?
No, you're just making things up. You're just saying...
No, you're just making things up.
Yeah, that's the problem.
This, this man is...
What's your question?
This is an irrelevant witness, I got to tell you.
What's your question?
He comes here to tell us, you know, superfluous stuff based on a census from eight years ago. You know, I remember filling out the census. I don't remember putting down how many cars I own.
Can we get a question?
So, do we have it in, can we get a copy of the documentation even from eight years ago? Of this, these statistics?
I'm sure it's probably available, US Census. I'm sure you could go online or look up the US Census.
From the witness. And not from you, I'll tell you the truth again, Mr. Venero. You're advocating for the plaintiff.
I'm not advocating, I'm just trying to expedite your seat on here.
You are. Your mind is made up.
My mind's made up, okay.
That's what we've seen. People swarmed out of here last time because they see it.
Can you ask a question? Is that attacking somebody on the board?
Because I just started out asking one question, and you attacked me. You interrupted me.
You asked an inappropriate question.
And I'm saying this should be for the residents to ask questions of the witness, of what he testified to.
What's the question, please?
So you're a planner. Do you have any thoughts on whether or not this, this structure should have solar energy?
Objection. He did not testify to that. He has nothing to do with that.
Should it have solar? I really think it's safe to say for sure, there's many ways you could address environmental redevelopment.
So you're saying, you're thinking a lot of cars, a lot of people won't have cars who live here. Do we know what the cost of these rentals would be, sir?
I don't know. On the planner, I would like to place it...
Right, but isn't there, isn't there an issue in New Jersey regarding affordable housing?
In some places...
Laws are flying, you know, rulings are flying out.
My, but my recollection is revealing, well, the national census says that there is not a great old responsibility for infrastructure, there's a greater responsibility to go along with it.
So you're thinking people will have bicycles if they live there?
I, I, I don't think, I don't, everyone's going to have them, but yes, absolutely. There'll be people there who own a bicycle and don't own a car. There'll be people who own...
Are there bike racks?
Um, yes, there are, yes.
Bike racks, racks, bike racks are planned. I also noticed, as this gentleman pointed out, that you said the people who will come there will be more in touch with the environment.
I didn't say that exactly. I said that a lot of times, with, with, one of the factors that plays into why younger Americans, millennials and that age group may not drive as much or to have as, own cars as much because they're conscious of the, the pollution that could occur or impacts on...
But as the gentleman pointed out, the site is polluted.
We're going to have an expert.
I, I didn't testify.
Yeah, when is that going, what time is that going to come on? Depends on how long it takes asking questions. Do you know what the grocery stores are?
Maybe helpful on the environmental issue for us to put this...
Do you know whether or not...
Excuse me one second, the attorney just wants to make a statement.
Yes, Mr. Biase.
It, it may be helpful for all of us to understand that this board does not have any jurisdiction over any environmental issues. So that if any application were approved by a board of adjustment or planning board, it is subject to DEP approval, and that no project can start until there is DEP approval. So we're going to get information, I'm assuming, that will be informational purposes. But the only thing we can do is make it subject to if the board approves. If the board disapproves, then of course, everything becomes moot. And that is important for all of us here.
You can't make that a priority?
I'm sorry?
You as a board, as a planning board, can't make environmental conditions a priority?
It's up to the state of New Jersey, it's stringent.
And you don't care about the environmental situation?
Let me say this again. We don't have jurisdiction that has nothing to do about whether we're interested or not. We're all interested in the environment. We can't make any rulings on this.
Well, all we could do is make it subject to. So when Mr. Gashon...
New Jersey has some of the strictest environmental laws in the country, in the country. New Jersey ships all the contaminated dirt out to Pennsylvania because Pennsylvania doesn't consider it contaminated. So we have some of the strictest laws in the country. It's not up to a local planning board to decide, is this contaminated or not? It's up to the state of New Jersey.
Governor Chris Christie weakened a lot of those standards. Have you given any consideration to a health club taking residents in the retail space? Something, you know, like there's one up on Franklin.
It's, it's privileged within the redevelopment plan.
I mean, how many hundreds of cars that would, you know, require hours of operations?
Is that part of the question, I'm sorry?
Yeah. Have you considered any of that, do you have any information?
He has not testified to how the health club would...
Why so?
The only testimony with regard to potential health club came from the owner representative. When you ask him a question, are you supposed to be asking him questions on what he testified to?
You mean, we can't ask him whether or not he's considering some of these things?
He doesn't make the decision whether there's a health club there or not. He's the planner.
But he has to consider all the eventualities, right?
The decision as to who's going to be there is made by ownership.
Thank you.
Just one, one quick follow-up question. I apologize if you've already given this answer. Is there currently an existing rail stopper station adjacent to the light rail system, adjacent to this property? Is there currently an existing rail stop or station adjacent to the light rail system, adjacent to this property? Is there, is there currently a station there or...
It's more or less diagonally across the street on Belmont. And so if you were walking away from the site of Belmont.
Could you just put that back? Could you just point to the location of the stop?
So what exhibit are you referring to for the record?
It's marked A4. There's a, there's a photograph marked A4. And the light rail station is just to the east of Belmont. It's, it's less than, it's less than a couple hundred feet to, from the boundary of the property.
Anyone parking in the current lot, correct me if I'm wrong, they would have enormous difficulty getting from the existing parking lot to that rail station because they would have to trek across the site that is currently being hypothetically remediated by the DEP or is being monitored by the DEP. In other words, there's no easy means of access from the existing parking lot to the rail station. You would have to go through some circuitous route to get from the parking lot, the current parking lot, to that right rail station. What I'm about to argue is that...
If you would, the engineer testified exactly to what the path was. If you want me, after his witness is done, if you want me to recall the engineer, I'll have him retestify to the path, the walking path to the station.
I would appreciate, but all I would like to ask is if this project is realized, you would then be making it much, much easier for anyone choosing to park in this facility to get to that light rail station. And as Mr. Genior and others were trying to say, if I can speak on their behalf, is that this project will, by its nature, attract many more people to the facility to take advantage of that light rail station. And as a result, they will be impacting the existing parking.
When you say attract many more people, you mean residents to this facility?
No, non-residents who are using...
That question's been asked and answered as to what would happen.
There's a shared parking area, 194 spots between the existing supermarket and your proposed...
Again, that question's been asked and answered.
It's a public space. It's not going to be controlled by anyone. That's publicly accessible space. So what's gonna stop somebody from saying, oh, they've got this...
The owner of the property's gonna stop it by saying they're gonna monitor what goes on there. And if it's somebody other than a customer or a tenant, they're gonna have their vehicle removed. And that's what was testified to.
There's gonna be signage going up saying that if you're going to...
Depends on whether there's a problem or not.
Well, if there's a problem, then they will.
We know human nature, as Councilman Kennedy and others have alluded. This project, as constituted, many of us believe that you're going to see many, many more vehicles in this, using this facility than what you would theorize.
And don't you think the investment that my client is making, that he will care about having cars for his...
I'm not as experienced admitted as you are. I've only been, as I was the zoning board and matters like this for a few years. But we know you and your clients always greatly underestimate the true impact of parking.
I don't agree with your statement about my clients. This is one application. We're dealing with an application tonight.
It's all, you always lowball the actual number of cars.
I absolutely disagree with you. I tried to give an honest estimate or have my witnesses give an honest estimate.
You always use the most, most underrepresented estimates in coming up with these calculations.
I absolutely don't agree with that and you just got statistics from the planner.
We'll come back to this. Thank you.
Frank Fleishman, 132 Franklin Street. Sir, and you might, you might have answered this already. You, you mentioned the statistics from the census that's written. You also spoke about general demographic trends with the millennials. Can you cite some of your sources on that?
It's just from, from reading, reading sources, planning magazines, newspaper articles, things like that. It goes on planner, I mean, I see government articles like that and I, and I agree on that.
You, you mentioned before from another, another question that you would visit the site on weekdays, am I correct? Okay. Did you perhaps take a look at, during those times, did you perhaps look at the traffic on Belmont Avenue?
Traffic on Belmont?
Yes. Did you notice it?
Well, I did. It was, it really was very little traffic. Probably at times I would say because it was weekdays, the store was not, you know, very busy. Parking lot was relatively empty. I was able to come driving very easily, park wherever I wanted, and walk around the, the site.
Just a point of order, if I might. Mr. Gassiel, one of your clients, Mr. Stolar, was laughing at one of the questions before. I would suggest that you counsel your client that it may not harm his argument with the board, but if he's trying to be a good neighbor to the residents of Belleville, he might want to have a little bit more of a respect for, so, from the Belleville citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further questions of this witness from the public, we're gonna take a short five-minute break for us. Can I take a little break? Meeting's back to order, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, I had, when I opened, I said I was gonna put the engineer on next. But there seems to be concern with regard to the environmental. And again, just so everybody understands the law, as I see it, they get what the council sees it, the environmental is a decision made by the LSRP or by the DEP. It is not a board decision. All the board can do, and I don't need to insult the board anyway, is condition any approval on our compliance with the LSRP or the DEP. But for information purposes, in order to try to answer questions of witnesses, I'll go out of order, the interested citizens, I'll go out of order and call up the LSRP.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and help the truth to help you die?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name and your...
Craig Gendron, G E N R O N. What is your occupation, Mr. Gendron?
I'm an environmental consultant.
And where do you provide your services?
Primarily in New Jersey, New York, and throughout New England.
And for how long have you been practicing as an LSRP?
The program began in 2012. That's when the first licenses were allowed and that's when I got my license. I started with the LSRP program in 2012. And over that period and before that period, I've been practicing environmental consulting, again, in New York, New Jersey, and throughout New England for about 30 years.
From what school did you graduate?
I've got a master's in civil engineering with Connecticut Federal Transport from the University of Illinois. And I've got a bachelor of science in geological engineering from the Colorado School of Mines.
Are you a licensed remediation professional and also a licensed engineer of the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Can you briefly give the board a benefit of some of your experiences in LSRP?
Yeah, LSRP, that, like I say, it's since 2012, I've been managing sites in New Jersey. I've got probably a dozen right now active sites that I am responsible for. I've had over the years up to 20 at a time. And in addition to that, as I said, I've been practicing in New Jersey even before the LSRP program began. And I have dozens of sites that I've investigated and remediated. And that experience has stretched from the first phases of the site work, which are preliminary assessments, all the way through REOs, which are response action outcome statements, which are the final documents for the sites.
And have you testified previously?
I have.
Accepted as an expert at LSRP? Mr. Chairman, I submit that my witness is qualified as an LSRP and an engineer.
We'll accept your witness as an expert. Could you state for the public what LSRP stands for?
Licensed Site Remediation Professional.
Everybody got that? That's what the LSRP...
What does an LSRP do?
Under the LSRP program and under the statute that enables that particular program, the LSRP is given the opportunity to lead the investigation and remediation of impacted properties. So we're able to go forward with cleanups without DEP approval under most circumstances. There are places where if variances are required, then the DEP gets involved. And certainly when...
And I'm sorry, when he says variances, he doesn't mean variances before boards?
That's right. Variance to the rules that guide the remediation program. So our role on these is to protect human health and the environment. That's our primary responsibility. And under the enabling regulations, there are opportunities for us, as I said, to proceed with this work without DEP free approval. And again, under circumstances where we vary from the regulations, that's when the DEP can get involved.
I want to reiterate, your primary responsibility is to protect human health and the environment. Is that correct?
That's right.
What information and material did you do prior to commencing your investigation?
On this particular site, we reviewed preliminary assessment work that had been done before we started. We reviewed site investigation information. That should be monitoring wells and soil boring information. We reviewed sandborne maps, historical aerial photos, tilt graphic maps. All of that work was done before we engaged at the site.
And did you, what, striking, would you give us a brief history of the property?
Yeah, the property up until about 1970, and that would be from the early 1900s to 19, approximately 1970, our research has shown that it was operated as a portion of a battery manufacturing operation. From about 1970 to close to 1980, the property was being demolished, building structures were being removed. And in about 1980, that's when the supermarket store, I forget which one started there, but that's when the supermarket was established. So the supermarket is Pathmark. Supermarket has been there from 1980 to the present under various names. As a piece of that supermarket store, there was a dry cleaning operation that was at one end of the supermarket.
And did you do a remedial investigation after being engaged?
Yes, we did.
And reveal what your remedial investigation revealed?
Yeah, first of all, the remedial investigation was completed and the report was issued to the DEP in May of 2007. So just for the record. But in general, we put in soil boring, soil boreings, we put in monitoring wells. Roughly 90 soil boreings or wells have been installed across that property. Approximately 250 soil and/or groundwater samples have been collected over our tenure at this site. So through that information, we were able to investigate under the rules that guide our activities and delineate the various issues that we encounter at the site.
Is there historic fill on the properties?
Yes, there is. The, the issues that we uncovered through that extensive investigation included site-wide historic fill. It included two areas of soil impacts that required remediation. And it also, we also found two areas of groundwater impacts that are requiring remediation as well.
And just to clarify briefly, for the benefit of the board here, just to see this, what is historic fill?
The historic fill has got a very specific definition within the technical regulations that guide the work that I do as an LSRP. Historic fill is fill that has been brought onto the property in order to raise the grade to allow for eventual development. And a key aspect of that is if it's impacted and found to be impacted on site, it needs to be impacted before it gets placed on the property. So this is not fill that's been impacted by site operations. It's fill that's been impacted before it was placed.
And doesn't require remediation?
If it's impacted and found to be impacted, yes.
And would the planned environmental remediation be compatible with residential development?
It's interesting. In the technical requirements for certain remediation, which are the prevailing regulations that I am bound to follow as an LSRP, there's a specific requirement regarding residential development on historic fill. And in general, the two requirements that are in place in order to allow for that development to happen are what the co-presupptive remedies, and there's two things. There's engineering controls and there's institutional controls. On the engineering control side, that means putting in barriers, buffers and barriers in order to eliminate potential contact with the soil, right? That's on the engineering side. On the institutional side, there are what they call classification exception areas that allow for the groundwater that's impacted by the historic fill to be there and be managed and be isolated from people actually intersecting it. So you can't put in drinking water wells, you can't excavate down to the water table and drink the water. Those are the requirements that allow for the development of sites like this to be placed on historic fill.
Was the fill removed from the site or soil removed from the site?
Yes. As part of the remedial actions that have already been undertaken at the site, there's been about 355 tons of petroleum impacted soil that was uncovered during the investigation. That has already been removed. There was about six tons of solvent impacted soil that associated with the laundromat that has been removed from the site. So those are the two actions that they completed.
Is historic fill very prevalent in northern New Jersey?
Especially in northern New Jersey. There's historic fill maps that are available to the public that show where the DEP, even without any sampling data, has determined there to be the presence of historic fill. And the way they do that, they look at historical topo maps, they look at over the years of development. And in areas that have, where the grades have been raised a certain amount, those are the areas that they've identified as potential historic fill areas.
You talked about removable land soil. What remedial action reviews did they complete?
So the actions that remain at the site in order to get to closure under the LSRP program are several-fold. One, it's the historic fill, which needs to be managed so that it can accommodate the development and also be remediated in accordance with the regulations. That's one piece of it. Another piece of it are two areas of groundwater impacts that aren't under any of the existing or proposed, well, not under any of the proposed development areas, but there are groundwater impacts that remain on the site that need to be managed, monitored, and dealt with as well.
Was your company engaged to ensure compliance with all DEP requirements in order to proceed with construction and eventual occupancy of the building?
Yes, it's part of my primary responsibility. It's to, for this particular site and for any site of which I'm the LSRP. It's number one, as I mentioned, protecting health and the environment all the way through the end and through the closure of these properties. So, yes, in this case, that is one of my primary roles here is to make sure it's part of the closure of the property that it's available for the proper development which is planned here and also to make sure through time it's monitored and closed in accordance with the rules.
In order to commence construction, does the DEP have to approve the project?
No, not through, and let me, let me give some information around that. As I mentioned, we are putting in, and the plan is to follow the regulations in terms of what's required to move forward with residential development over historic fill. The regulations are very clear as to exactly what has to be in place, all the way down to thicknesses of barriers and buffers and demarcation layers, down to the kinds of permits that will be required in order to enable that particular type of development. So the plan is to follow the regulations to a T, monitored by the LSRP to make sure it's done properly, not ask for any variances to the technical regulations, which is where the DEP would have to get involved. But that's not the plan here. So up to the point that we're able to ensure that those engineering controls and the institutional controls are enabled. Once that's in place, development can proceed.
Okay, you've indicated you want to ensure everything is complied with. So were you engaged to ensure all necessary safeguards be complied with and all relevant regulations be followed?
Yes.
And when do you think the advocate can commence site work at the site? Site work at the site?
Yeah, the site work can begin, you know, once the, once the development plan is approved by, assuming it gets approved by the board. We'll have the information we need to then work with the civil engineers to make sure that the engineering controls are designed and implemented once those designs and implementation plans are in place. The process is that we develop a remedial action work plan that incorporates those necessary engineering controls. And we have to issue that 60 days before, to the DEP, 60 days before the actual construction commences. And that's the only time requirement.
And subsequent to that, when can actual construction of the buildings commence?
Yeah. The, the construction of the buildings, the real issue there is you don't want to start the building construction until you verify that all the engineering controls are in place. Engineering controls, as I said, are specific thicknesses of buffers and barriers to ensure that the public and anybody else can't intercept the historic fill. So once those foundations, walkways, landscape areas, those are the elements of the engineering control, once those are all in place, inspected by the LSRP myself to make sure that they are exactly in accordance with the remedial action work plan, that's when the actual building construction can begin.
No further questions in this court, Mr. Chairman?
Assume that's all.
No.
You said there's more soil to be removed, that there's more soil to be removed, remediation to be done?
There's, there's no more soil. Under the plan that we have, there's no more soil that's impacted that is required to be removed. The plan is to leave the historic fill in place and provide the barriers and engineering controls that are required to allow for the development to happen without moving it off-site.
And you said approximately 355 tons has already been removed?
Uh, 361. There was six... Uh, three hundred and sixty-one. There was six, uh, chlorinated, some three fifty-five of the petroleum.
What types of contamination is made by the historic fill?
Yeah, historic fill is like many sites that I've dealt with, especially in Essex County. There are a group of metals, typical metals, copper, zinc, all kinds of metals that are there. Uh, in addition, there's compounds called polymeroheramatic hydrocarbons, PAHs. And just as a little bit of context here, um, the rules don't even, if you have a site where you've identified historic fill, in this case, we have, we've got borings all over the property. We have it monitored from one end to the other, and we've found historic fill on every, almost every single boring on the property. Uh, we know it's historic fill, it's got the exact signature of, of the way it's described in the regulations. It's got cinders, it's got ash, it's got demolition debris, it's got all of the things that classify, allow us to classify as historic fill. So the site is holding, all right? The, the, whatever I was going with this is, if you've identified it visually, the rules don't even require you to sample it in order to get closure of it. It's just assumed to be impacted because there's been so many studies of it over the years, and it's so prevalent that it's not even deemed necessary to, to sample, uh, to figure out all of the constituents that are there. All that you do is you assume in the, in the permit documents that it's impacted with metals and PAHs, that's what you can do.
Would, would the fact that the, the actual housing units are elevating aid in sep, the fact that the housing units are elevated, would that aid in separating the dwellings from any potential contaminants?
Absolutely. The, the whole idea of what the DEP requires and we have to implement is separation, okay? It's separating the public from the historic fill. So whether it's foundations and subgrade, clean fill subgrade, or whether it's a walkway, pavers and a foot of clean soil, or landscape barriers withdraw elements of this plan here, any one of those or all of those can constitute a barrier between the public and the impacted soil which is the his, historic fill.
You say you took two hundred and fifty soil samples, so you're not just assuming it's historic fill? Was, was there a chance that there, there's other contaminations, meaning it was a battery, a factory?
So, just to clarify, it was two hundred and fifty total, so a hundred and twenty-five soil, a hundred and twenty-five water, just for the record. But with all of that sampling there, we were looking for anything and everything at the property. So we didn't go there just to investigate historic fill. We went there to investigate whatever could have been discharged on that property.
How many were yours?
Uh, we've got a couple that are, are forty to fifty feet deep. Um, most of them, because the water table there, if you're familiar with the area, six feet deep at the water. So they don't, we don't have to go very far to figure out what's going on. So most of them are within fifteen feet, twenty feet, a few that are down to thirty-five or forty feet.
And out of those samples, was there anything that came to your surprise, anything out of the ordinary, or?
No, the, 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 what we found is that the distribution of impacts in that historic fill layer, which is about six feet deep at the site roughly, um, was that it was ubiquitous. We didn't find hot spots of metals here and not over here. We found it over the entire site. Similar, you know, arrangement of metals, similar arrangement of pebbages, which makes complete sense that this is historic fill issues that we're dealing with. So, that answer your question?
Any other members?
I believe you said there were still two groundwater areas. Can you show me who they are?
Uh, sure. So I had mentioned also that there was, I'll also do it here and then I'll do it there, how about that?
Just tell us what exhibit that is, sir.
Uh, exhibit A three. I'm on it. So, so there were two areas where we removed soil. I mentioned six tons roughly. That was over here, this, this was the former dry cleaner area. So there was about six tons of soil. Let me get through this. I'm, I'm describing what the source of those issues were that had been removed now. So it's about six tons of soil, of chlorinated soils that were removed there. So that was right around that area right there. And then there were two hundred and fifty-five roughly tons of petroleum impacted soils that were moved right up in this area here, and I'll point it out on the other board in a second, so up in that general area. Now, doing that to show you what, up, up here was a component. So, so that soil had to go, okay? It wasn't historic fill that you can leave. It was impacts that were placed there, not purposely probably, but were there. Um, those soils have been removed here, the soils have been removed there. But before we got to them, because this probably happened decades ago, they left behind a signature of solvent impact, very dilute, but nevertheless above the very stringent standards that New Jersey has that exists below this building here, okay, below the supermarket, okay? No further, does not go off-site, stays in this area. Over time, that has been getting less and less in concentration and it's moving in the right direction, so we're going to continue to monitor that. This area here, okay, what I just pointed out was the chlorinated area right over here. I know that it's kind of ridiculous, but that's where it is. My pointer's probably not that accurate. Um, the other area, there's petroleum impacts here that I mentioned that have been removed. That area of impact extends down to kind of right where the concrete walkway is, so it's a smaller pool, but it's right over in this area here. I'm describing area of petroleum impacted water that extends right in this general vicinity here. Um, it's monitored by a number of wells. The sources, we believe, have been removed now. Water quality is improving since the removal, so we're going to continue to monitor and hope, not hope, but we're planning that that's going to naturally attenuate over time. So those are the two areas.
You do have monitoring wells on that back property adjoining public service, right?
We do.
I know public service removed a large quantity of contaminated material a couple, probably two, three years ago.
Yep, yep.
So, that's monitored, that's monitored.
Yeah, do you need more on the board?
Yeah, next question. Would excess drainage into that area or that on your show, would that seep down and then dissipate?
Excess drainage from what?
Uh, it was previously testified, I believe, that under that carport, they're going to be putting a flat curve so all the water from the parking lot will drain into that, uh, green area.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent knowledgeable about the drainage that's going to happen there. The civil can certainly answer some of that information. As I understood it, it was going to go to a detention bas, subsurface detention basin and then shuffle off-site. That's what I understood. So that wouldn't impact.
They made a comment that they were putting in a flat curve to drain into that green area just to, um,
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
For the drains to just go into the ground.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. From what you're describing, there's all pavement in that general area. It's going to remain pavement, it's going to be drained and controlled with a subsurface disposal system that will then lead to a drainage basin which will meet off-site. So I'm not anticipating any issues.
So what was testified and it says it's going to be a flat curve?
I'm not disputing that that may be the answer, what you described there. But what I'm saying is, it's that small area in that green area there that you're talking about. In my view, that probably wouldn't have any impact anyway, but that's definitely a question you might want to ask the civil here.
He should be my next witness. I've got to call him back on the traffic. Any other issue you raised about the zoe pipe? Question, in terms of excavation, how do you handle the soil that is historic soil that needs to be excavated for the drainage or contamination?
Yeah, that has to be sampled, classified, and discharged, yeah, disposed off-site properly, absolutely.
Any other board members have questions with this witness? Anybody in the public have questions for this witness? I'll start with Mr. Frank Anton.
Yes, sir, he said that, actually, the CME representative for the town, when he texted, buddy, said there were environmental concerns. There was no NFA letter yet. Isn't there an NFA letter or do you anticipate one?
No, the NFA letter's left when the LSRP program began. So it had no NFA letter, there will be no NFA letter for the site. What there will be is a response action outcome statement, which I'll write, that's the RAO. That's the, that takes the place of a no further action.
And the New Jersey DEP, did they oversee, do you have to report tonight? We got to report.
We have to issue reports to them, that's right.
Did they have any input on, did they actually, or they just take your word or what?
It's a complex question. If you stick with the regulations and as I mentioned before, have no variances to the technical regulations, then I can guide the remediation. We have to issue them reports. They have an opportunity to come back and talk, but that's, they still leave it up to the LSRP to guide the direction of the program. That's the way, that's the site remediation format, that's what it was to enable, is speedier cleanup of these properties. And that's why they let us take the position of the regulator when it comes to making decisions on cleanup. I will say one more thing. In order to get closure of the site, to get this RAO that we're talking about, response action outcome, there will be permits required, okay? Those permits are issued by the DEP. So in order to get to that eventual closure of the site, the DEP will be able to weigh in because they can either give you the permit or they can't. So it's up to them to cooperate with the LSRP to get the permit so we can effect closure of the site.
How about the EPA, the federal environmental protection?
No, they don't have any jurisdiction on this particular site.
They're not involved in this.
No, absolutely not.
Site whatsoever. Now, this, Matthew Sutton, the largest, one of the members questioned about that draining water into the green area. Then I thought you said that the whole area is not the asphalt.
No, the green area is, that I was describing is an area that's mostly landscaped now, so that's not changing. What I was saying is, I, I don't know where exactly you were pointing, and maybe I was interpreting it wrong, but we were talking about this area petroleum impacted water. Where that sits, it's all pavement above it now. And I, as I understand the development plan, and it's, it's sitting here front of us, that area's going to be paved in the future as well, so that's not going to change.
Right, so you used some technical terms about problems with historic fill more, but the word that the public knows is, are, is you say we're going to cap?
It's, it's a buffer and, it's a buffer and a barrier system. So there's a barrier on top, could be landscaping, could be concrete, could be asphalt, could be foundation of a building. And then there's a buffer, which is clean fill. And then below the buffer, they actually tuck in what they call a demarcation layer. So that if anybody digs in the future, unknowledgeable to the LSRP, because they wouldn't do that, um, they'll encounter this barrier material and know that they're now approaching on the historic fill. So that's, that's the system of, that's the general system, barrier buffer.
Would the general public, with some knowledge of that, would they, would that be referred to as capping?
Uh, I've heard it called that before, yes.
And the other thing that's paved and waved, are you familiar with that term?
No, I've not heard that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any written information regarding?
Get your state nameplate for the record.
Do you have any?
Thank you.
Do you have any written information for, for the board and the audience about what concentrations were found there of the various toxic metals and other things?
I don't, not with me today. Can I say, the document that we issued that has all that information is available to you. It's at the DEP's office, it's public document.
Now, from what I'm gathering, the DEP won't be coming to supervise anything here.
They can inspect anytime they want, but I don't know if.
If they want.
If they want to.
But basically, um, I've heard the DEP mentioned several times by particularly the chairman. Uh, but the DEP isn't necessarily going to be coming, because you're, you're the site manager.
Yeah, there was, with a couple of exceptions there. Um, one, in order to get closure of the site, to get that response action outcome statement, we need permits, okay? Those permits require a submittal to the DEP, and they have to review the entire site. And at that point, they can issue, which we're hopeful they do, the permit for both the soil issues and the groundwater issues. So it's not entirely accurate that they're not involved at that spot where the permit's required that they are.
So ninety borings were done, and some of them as deep as sixty feet, forty feet?
Uh, yeah, yeah, a couple, very, very few went that deep.
Is the contamination all of toxins all the way down?
No, absolutely not.
How far?
The historic fill is about six feet deep on the site. So that's the extent of the historic fill impacts. The soil, as I mentioned, we've already removed the soil that had to be removed that exceeds standards that aren't associated with the historic fill. Those soils are gone. So, yeah, six, six feet.
So when the project is done, and a lot of the existing pavement will have to be removed?
In order to affect the, the development plan, as you see here, a large portion of the existing pavement, pavement will have to be removed, that's right.
And that's going to expose all of the, uh, toxic soil?
Uh, the historic, the historic fill.
Gathering six feet deep.
Well, the historic fill will likely be encountered when they do site work, construction, absolutely.
So won't that be a hazard to the construction workers themselves?
Well, properly mitigated through site controls, through personal protective equipment, through plans that have to be written in advance of them doing that work, we're going to mitigate any impacts to the workers.
So when they have the heavy machinery going in there, uh, to do some of the work, isn't some of that dirt going to be flying up in the air and floating around in the air where these residents live?
And that's, that's part of, that's a great question. That's part of the, there's a soil management plan that is part of the remedial, I'm, I'm not going to lose you here. That's soil, I know, there's a soil management plan that's inserted as part of the remedial action work plan. That's the document that I mentioned had to go in sixty days before the actual work can begin, okay? So that soil management plan is meant to address issues that you're describing here, dust, whatever. Uh, though, any tracking, uh, you know, material on and off-site, all that will be mitigated by that plan.
You mentioned the development plan, you said once the development plan is approved. Hasn't the board already approved a development plan, a redevelopment? They've already approved one, right?
Well, they've approved the plan, the redevelopment plan, but this is the application based on that redevelopment plan. So this is a site plan application, we're looking for site plan. I may not use, approval of the application, how about that?
So it's a new development, okay. Technically it's not a new, but it's a new application. Uh, can you name some of the pollutants sitting in the soil there?
Um, sure. There's, um, in historic fill, okay? There's certain metals, there's copper, there's zinc, there's nickel, um, those come to mind, I can't name all of them, but those are.
How about arsen?
Uh, yeah, there's probably some arsen.
How about lead?
I imagine that there's some lead.
Mercury?
I'm not sure about that.
Pallium?
Yeah, heavy metals have a range of concentrations that are even allowed for pure residential development and contact. So having just some of those compounds in the soil doesn't necessarily mean that it's a hazard. So when I'm citing that there's some metals there, I'm not saying to you that every one of those exceeds the standards. So there are metals there, that's, that's for sure.
Okay, I think that's a, one I wanted to ask you, except the, any grassy areas and where all the trees are going to be? How is there going, how are you going to have a tree growing or a grass, grassy areas? And not have some of the toxins escaping from those particular locations?
Yeah, the DEP, as I mentioned, in the way that they fashion the regulations to account for this kind of development over historic fill, it's very prescribed, they're called presumptive remedies. They've got, they've gone so far as to identify the actual separation around a root ball for a tree, how much clean fill needs to be all the way around the root ball in order for it to be allowed. So that's how their, that's how landscaping can happen, and there not be any, um, connection between the public and historic fill. It's down to that level that the regulations specify, that barrier buffer system.
So you've done, right now you're working on twelve?
I've got twelve active cases right now.
And they're all like, like this polluted sites?
Uh, there are a variety of things, but yeah, every one of them has its, is a case meaning that there's environmental impact.
And you've done, how many dozens, hundreds?
Uh, probably, yeah.
And this is New Jersey?
Yeah.
So all of the, this is a major. So all of the, this is a major problem in New Jersey?
I do work all over the place. So I don't know that New Jersey and the sites that I look at, I can really sit and say right here as I stand that it's the worst, all right? They certainly have their impacts. I've got similarly impacted properties that I deal with in Connecticut, in New York, in Vermont. Think about Vermont, that's not a place that you gravitate to and think that it's.
So New Jersey's like the most polluted state in the country?
I can't speak to that. I don't know.
I think that's all I can think of.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47 Close Street. Mr. Gendron, you have mentioned a few times that the historical fill on the site typically is about six feet vertically?
In that range.
Sorry. When this case first came before the planning board a year or so ago and there was discussions about declaring it an area needing redevelopment, it was mentioned that the total extent of the contamination on the site occupied a square area of about 10 acres. Now, if you're, if you're, it sounds like you're going to need to remove six feet of soil over an area of 10 square acres. And if you do the quick calculation, that turns out to be about 3 million cubic feet of dirt or about 100,000 cubic yards. Now, typical commercial dump truck that carries has a capacity of about 14 cubic feet. You're looking at.
Mr. Sheldon, he never testified he had to remove that dirt.
He said, he had to say that there are areas where the historical fill would need to be removed, about six feet.
I didn't say that.
So you're not, you're going to cap that?
We're putting in a buffer and a barrier system over the historic fill. That's what I said.
So that would essentially is a concrete barrier that would be.
No, it's not concrete. In some places it's concrete because it's a foundation. In other areas it's landscaping, okay? In other areas it's pavement. So it's a variety of measures that constitute the engineering controls which the D E P mandates for sites just like this.
I guess I have to defer to your expertise, but the type of other barriers that you're suggesting just don't, unless it would be concrete, I don't see how that would be a permanent obstacle for some of these toxins and carcinogens to eventually reach their way out of the ground. It sounds like you're going to put different types of sand and plastics to try to contain these very serious pollutants and these toxins.
Let me see if I can answer it this way. So after the barrier system and the buffer system are installed, whether it's concrete or whether it's pavement or pavers or landscaping, there's going to be maintenance of those features that are going to be required. I keep bringing up this permit. Permits that'll be required that the D E P will have a hand in writing, in fact, they write them, mandate operation and maintenance of these engineering controls. That's how you mitigate. So if somebody, if you're out there, you inspect the pavement, let's say annually, any issues crop up, you fix cracks, you repair pavement, you do whatever it takes to make sure that that engineering control continues to operate the way it was intended.
I'm glad you mentioned maintenance, but I'm going to address that in a second. Would you say that the best type of barrier, without having any future risk, the best possible barrier would be a concrete cap compared to two different types of fill or plastic barriers?
No, absolutely not.
Concrete is not the best type of barrier?
No, no. For instance, concrete doesn't wear well for drive aisles. It depends on site use. I mean, there's certain areas of the site where that will work fine. In fact, you know, foundations of buildings would be better out of concrete than out of pavement. But areas where there's parking, you're going to be adjusting, you're going to want to do utility work down the road, it's much easier to deal with going through some pavement than it is through some concrete.
Perhaps Mr. Gashew will object that I'm giving testimony rather than asking questions, but it turns out that there are a number of academic journals dealing with this type of engineering problem. And I came across an article from the journal called Remediation. It's entitled hazardous chemical site.
Why don't we swear you in if you're going to give this so much?
Sure, I wanted to just read one little relevant thing into the record if you don't mind.
Please sit down for questions.
Well, it has a bearing on what Mr. Gendron just said about these types of barriers. I just think this is important wherever you want to hear. Just read a section into the record, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Sheldon, I'm going to object to reading a section into the record from something.
I'll submit it into evidence. I'll give this to the chair.
Well, at the end you would be able to do it, so to save time, why don't we swear you in on this? Because it is not a question. And I understand counsel's objection, which is correct. But at the same time, we'll let you do this.
Thank you. If I make a, my other objection is, what basis upon which do we take this kind of information? How do we know it's valid information? I've qualified my LSRP very carefully, qualified to talk about this.
I'll instruct the board to give whatever way they need to remember. My position on this, my position on this is that this is background material for the board since we do not have jurisdiction. And we'll consider this paragraph that you're reading as more background information.
You swear the whole truth about the truth about the truth about?
So this is a journal that calls remediation. The title of it is hazardous chemical site remediation through capping, problems with long-term protection. I just want to read two little sections of it. Those familiar with landfill caps know that they are at best only postponed when future groundwater pollution will occur by leachable waste constituents in contaminated soils or waste management units that are capped as part of the site remediation. While in-place capping of wastes in contaminated areas is certainly one of the least expensive short-term approaches for hazardous chemical site brownfield remediation that carries with it potentially significant long-term issues that should must be addressed in developing a properly remediated site. In the last couple of paragraphs. One of the most significant problems associated with onsite waste or contaminated soil management using capping as a remediation approach is that funds for maintenance, this is why Mr. Gendron brought maintenance, funds for maintenance and the cap are only assured for 30 years. The magnitude of the 30-year post-closure funding is typically not adequate to replace the cap should deterioration proceed at a rate faster than expected. While in virtually all waste management units, the waste will be a threat for far beyond 30 years, there is no assurance that funds will be available to continue to maintain the cap, monitor the groundwaters and provide for remediation of polluted groundwaters when the pollution occurs. In most situations, the waste will be a threat effectively forever. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We're happy to have this. I'll give this as part of the record.
Obviously, I do.
Well, now would not be the right time to do that. When you get up and sum up.
Yes, I will. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd just like my witness to have responded to that. What was the question? I'm just trying to make sure I answer whatever your question is.
You mentioned that you would, there would be a maintenance program to make sure that these barriers and buffers would be maintained. But as this article points out, that most projects only have a short-term facility to guarantee maintenance, that after, after a decade, in some cases, three decades, the developer and whatever walk away and the site is allowed to fare on its own. And that's when all the fun begins. That's when all the contamination that's been harbored for two or three decades now is released.
What was your question?
I think his question was, after 30 years, there's still going to be money to maintain it, right? Mr. Sheldon, is that what I asked?
I would like the assurance that they have a commitment for perpetuity as long as they're, they're, well, I know that sounds.
I think your article stated landfill, well, this is a landfill.
It's a barrier, it's a barrier.
They also stated brownfields.
Will fail. And whatever barriers they're planning, they're not going to last forever. At some point in time, maybe not in our lifetimes, but our kids or our grandkids sometime, these barriers will fail.
Mr. Sheldon, I'd like to object a second here. You may have a point, about a point. My father was a chemist. We would build nowhere. We'll knock everybody's house down and we'll remediate the soil underneath our homes. There's radon gases. I'm sure if I dunk, I live on Route 10 Estates, that former dump has motor oil under my home gas. We're never going to remove all the contaminants that are in New Jersey's land. So if we're going to follow the guidelines of the D E P and we have assurance that the developer is going to do the right things within those guidelines, we could stay here till midnight debating this. There's no assurance he could give, there's no assurances 30, 40, 50 years down the road for anything. He could say it.
I would say it, trust me. That'd be the last thing I would say, is that it's somebody's perpetuity?
To me, listen, in my opinion, as a board member, when I look at things that are contaminated, and I've done a little work around contaminated sites, you have to take the law as it's written and have some, you know, faith in the government's control of these dangerous substances. He's already commented that these substances aren't even at a level where they are a contaminant. They're a brownfield at best, at some point. Listen, I've worked in the dirt for 40 years. I'm sure I've handled toxic stuff without knowing it. I'm fine. And so if we're going to take that approach, your approach, that to me is an extreme approach, we will build nothing anywhere. And then don't complain when the town looks like it does, because we just won't build anywhere. Every, Belga's an industrial town. I hear it all the time. So that means we can't build anything anywhere.
I just want it to be understood, I'm not opposed to development. Belga certainly needs it. I just don't want what seems to many of us to be a bandage being put on a very seriously contaminated site.
That's not true. It's not seriously contaminated. He already testified that they took out the most dangerous chemicals some years back. And many years back, Cooper Industries took out tons and tons and tons of dirt on the other site of what was that property, on Alpha Street.
But the historic fill still contains all sorts of very serious metal pollutants.
The developer has to follow state regulations and standards. If we don't have any faith in that, then we're never going to move forward.
Sir, would you comment on the, I thought the the principal question was whether or not there is a deterioration of the barrier? You could address that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, and this goes back to the O and M, there's natural deterioration. There's drive aisle wear that happens. And all those things under the plant, the operation, maintenance and monitoring plan, which is incorporated into the permit, which lives on forever, the permit does, those requirements will never leave. So there's always going to be inspections of the pavement, inspections of the concrete, inspections of the site, and any repairs that are necessary are going to be required to be made. One thing I'll point out, if the basis of that article there is on landfill, it sounded like that's maybe the source of some of the information there. This is not a landfill. Landfills are characteristically organic issues. Over time, with caps, degradation happens, volatilization happens, leachate gets developed. That's not what happens with historic fill.
If you're familiar with the history of the site, if there was a lake there, it was during the history of the Edison battery plant that Silver Lake got filled in by all of these waste materials. So this is a landfill.
Well, we didn't find it, so, and we put in 200-some odd investigation locations.
There was a lake there, as well as a dam. If you have access to Dr. George Hough's book.
I object now.
The witnesses testified, they tested it and didn't find it.
I think we have enough background information on this.
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut Street, Belga. I have a copy here of the information on file with the D E P on this property from the preliminary investigation from those monitoring wells and ground samples. Iron, aluminum, mercury, arsenic, lead, manganese, nickel, sodium, beryllium? Beryllium, I'm sorry, valium. Up to 150 times the amount of allowable amounts in groundwater and earth in this area. The historic use of this property was of a magnitude.
Again, this is completely testimony.
No, I'm asking a question. Excuse me, excuse me. Please don't interrupt me regularly and.
Well, you're cash to find.
You tend to harass people asking questions. No, what do you tell me, please? What the historic use of this property as known by you in your investigation, you know, dating back to the turn of the last century? And I don't mean 2000, 1900. What was the historic use of this property?
Yeah, and I testified to that, that it was battery operations, battery manufacturing operations.
And chemical works?
Associated with battery manufacturing?
No, and chemical works.
Okay, all right.
No, I'm just surprised, only because the professional that the board, you know, hired to report also neglected to mention the historic use and the record that was on record with the D E P of this property, this subject property. So the historic use was the battery manufacturing and chemical works of the Edison Corporation.
And I'm familiar with the operations, and the operations did not end on this property. They extended to other properties as well. So when you talk about operations at the battery, or the battery or chemical working operations, it was a mixture on both properties. So it's hard to say exactly what happened on this piece of the property. What I can say is, with all the investigation locations that we put in there, hundreds of samples that we collected, we could not link any of the impacts that we found to anything with the metals that you just described there, and P A Hs and things, to anything but the historic fill. There were no hotspots. We put borings exactly where some of the old buildings were.
But you're also talking about groundwater.
All I'm talking about is soil and groundwater.
Right, but if we're talking about historic pollution, this goes far and beyond potentially any fill. If the pollution was generated on the property and then the water table, which we are very close to, as you have pointed out, it is not high above the water table. And it was a lake, Silver Lake. This was it. And the Edison plant and manufacturing chemical company.
Again, here we go.
This is nothing but testimony.
It is the history of the use of property, and I'm getting to the point of, is this appropriate for capping? Or should this be completely considered as remediation only? And perhaps no residential be allowed on property that has a magnitude of carcinogens and water contamination that, you know, when you're talking about buffers and barriers, potentially, you know, shrubs, you're talking about, you know, history of, this is historic pollution that it really is just unbelievable.
Can we get a question?
Well, I just think, is this appropriate to put residential on this property with barriers of shrubs?
Let him answer your question.
Will you please let me, yeah, well, if you would be quiet, we could get to the point.
No, I won't.
Let's be civil here, please.
Well, I mean, I think it's harassment.
It's not harassment. Let him ask you a question. Do you think this site could be built on?
Absolutely.
With your 250 sample, how many borings did you say?
60 borings, 80 borings, somewhere in that range.
And out of those 80 borings, have we found hotspots or high levels of contamination other than historic fill?
It's ubiquitous, and that's part of what I'm hearing, and that is exactly the way it's characterizing the site there. The site wide, the historic fill, it's very obvious if you look at the borings there. Brecks, cinders, glass shards, everything that you would expect in historic fill.
I'm extremely concerned with the water pollution.
And we've got a whole network of monitoring wells out there, so.
Right, but what is that? I mean, you're speaking a lot to the borings. And when you're talking about crushed debris that was used as landfill, that is not, you know, that isn't making my point. Which is the pollution, it rises and lowers with groundwater, right, rising and lowering. Diffuses, like you've said, it does diffuse, but it also remains there. And that, you know, when you're.
Is there a question, Mr. Mattingly?
Yes, would you please stop harassing me and let me ask? Am I wasting your time? You have to excuse me if you think this is a.
Mr. Sheldon, I'm asking a question.
I am asking a question.
What's your expert answer, Mr. Sheldon?
There are impacts, as I mentioned, to fluorinated solvents. We're monitoring those and we're managing those. There are impacts from petroleum soils that have now been removed and we're monitoring them and we're managing them. There are also impacts related to historic fill. The way the state of New Jersey allows those to be managed is through institutional controls. It's making sure that that site is never intersected with a drinking water well where somebody can actually.
No one's going to drink the water, of course.
Perfect. It makes my job a lot easier when that's the case, but.
But then if that water were to raise up toxins and we get close to ground level and you're talking about having shrubs and things of that nature as a barrier.
It's not that shallow. The groundwater table doesn't rise to that level.
Well, it does on occasion. I mean, I, you know, I'm, my house is in Belga. I'm six feet down in the ground. Sometimes the water level comes up in cracks in the middle of the floor. The water table rises very high on occasion.
Is there a question?
There is.
What is your question?
Do you think that those barriers would be suitable if these things were to percolate up to a level where they could become airborne? Those historic, not ground?
What you brought up is a good point.
Well, thank you. Did you hear that?
Could you answer the question?
Please.
So when you mention airborne. So, so when you mention airborne, the kinds of chemicals you described there, the heavy metals, which are what you described, PAHs, those are not volatile compounds. Those are not ones that...
Parsnic?
No, that either. That is not a volatile compound. It tends to stay absorbed to the soil matrix. So that's not an issue, all of those.
Can he answer the question without you interrupting him? Who stepped out, sir?
So, issues of airborne, that's not, that's not the issue we're addressing by the remedy here. That's not a concern.
So you feel then that this is appropriate to capsulate that pollution and not have it be a hazard to those who could potentially live on a former industrial site, Mr. Gassion?
I do believe so, and we're following, just so you know, the exact requirements of the regulations for this exact situation. So if I follow the regulations, which are designed to be protective of public health and the environment, I am convinced that this is the right remedy.
I wish I could agree with you.
Is there one more question? Because our reporter needs a break, otherwise we'll get back.
Well, it's a follow-up, and that is, you're going to be on-site supervising the remediation?
As LSRP, I'm responsible for supervision, so I may not be on-site all the time, but there'll be, eyes and ears will be out there to observe and make sure that the work is done in accordance with the plan.
So would you admit that this is not gonna be a cleanup? This is only encapsulation. That's what you're playing. You're not taking up to six feet of contaminated soil? You're just gonna put something on top, a barrier on top?
This is in the definition of the work that we're doing. This is remediation. That's what this is.
So back in nineteen eighty, when they paved over the whole area, no cleanup was done, they just put tape there to... So then now, all these years later, it was almost thirty years later, here we are looking at another development on the location, and we're just gonna encapsulate again, leaving contaminants, the toxins there.
They took out three, over three hundred yards of material, right?
Yeah, I mean, and we're not done. If you took it all out, it would be three million cubic feet.
That wouldn't make sense, would it?
What?
That wouldn't make sense, would it?
Maybe part of the reason why the DEP developed these regulations.
It would be a final solution, to finally get that satisfied.
Because, you know, down the street, there's another lot. It could be someone's backyard that's leaching the same thing out. This is the point, trying to make, we could spend weeks here going over this. If the state allows it, and they're gonna, you know, comply with the state laws, we're just beating a dead horse. We're just, we could just keep going over this. The state will not allow housing to be built on contaminated soil, and if they do, you should go down a track and take it up with your...
The DEP used to have people that were sent out to sites, and Christie did away with all this.
Yeah, because we need to develop, we need to get all the board.
So now they're allowing these paid professionals, but paid by the developers to say everything is A O K, and you're buying into it.
It's not the issue before the planning board. It's not, it's not a contaminated concern.
It's not a concern, right?
Listen, it could be in our backyards, how would we know? Did anybody ever soil sample your home?
You've worked near contaminated sites, and look at you, right?
Right, I'm perfectly...
Have you had a blood test?
Alright, if there's no further questions in the public at this time, we're gonna give our short follow-up.
We can still ask questions after the break, right?
Not at this, we wanna finish up this witness and give our sonographer a break.
Sir, when I asked you, you said that you'll be doing it, the DEP will not come out to inspect the government.
They may, I can't say that they will or they won't, that's, they run their own schedules.
Well, Mr. Cott, I just want you to pay for, DEP ain't coming out here.
Who cares what they do? Who says a pure natural track is any better than this, man?
I'll answer your testimony at the proper time.
That's what he said. He said he doesn't know if the DEP would come out.
Well, look, with testimony I give, I just wanted to tell you, you...
I understand, I'm paying attention.
Just for the record, in case this ever goes to court, you're creating yourself a conflict event.
I'm not creating any conflict in anything.
We have no further questions of this witness, we're gonna take a short five-minute break for our sonography. The meeting's called back to order, and Mr. Fleishman has one more question.
Frank Fleishman wants to refer to Frank's student. So, in your professional opinion, you are looking at an in-site to remediation as opposed to an ex-site to remediation for this property?
Not exactly. There's a couple areas of groundwater impacts, okay, that are still being managed. The final plans for them are not one hundred percent complete at this point, alright? So I wouldn't say that that's the final remedy. We're hopeful that natural attenuation will do the job on that. We think it probably will. The rest of this is, you know, ex-itude and institute, there's, that isn't the way that I use the terminology. Institute remediation for organic compounds, typically there's amendments you add, and it biodegrades, and that's how the remediation's affected. So I'm not a hundred percent connected. I think you understand what we're doing there, it sounds like you do anyway, so...
My question would be, you've been doing this even before the LSRP program?
Oh, way before, yeah.
To your knowledge, has there ever been a failure of a capping system or buffer barriers to any, to speed up?
I don't have any sites where that's happened. As I said, they all come with maintenance plans, so we do have to do maintenance. Some sites have fences that are part of that engineering control, some have pavement, so we have to go back in and actually seal some of the pavement in some instances. So there's a variety of O and M activities that are put in place to make sure that they don't fail, don't have a catastrophic failure.
You said that about three hundred cubic yards, was it?
Tons.
Tons was removed. Do you know when that might have happened?
Two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, across those two years. And the plans that describe that ad nauseam, the remedial action reports, are filed with the DEP, so they're already in the public domain.
Are you familiar with the edge water quantum remediation of honeywax? I guess my final question, this will be my final question, I promise. With the contaminants that are there now, arsenic, lead, that sort of thing, do you feel that keeping that historical fill as safe as the chemical home that worked down, turned to gas, go through the barrier, is there any danger to that?
No, these compounds are terribly stable, okay? And that's part of the nature of historic fill, and that's why the DEP has allowed them to be managed safely. That's what the rules are required to do, is provide a safe remedy, and that's what we're following. So because these things are pervasive, they're gonna be there perpetuity.
Mr. Gassion, you have another witness?
I do, I have a couple more.
Excuse me, I have a question. Thank you. Mary Higgins, one forty-eight Brighton Avenue. This is gonna seem a rather simplistic question with that all the chemical rhetoric, but one of the common ways to assess the toxicity of the soil is to test colonies of earthworms that burrow down below the frost line. They can go further than six feet down to test if the soil is viable for example, for growing shrubs, trees, all those plants. Was that done?
No.
Why not?
We're not required to do that?
And with regard to the shrubbery and that, that's gonna be built in, the buffer barrier system, so it's gonna be above the historic fill?
Oh, just out of curiosity, this is what I asked it. I guess you're familiar with the American Legion across the street from there, the American Legion Hall? Because next to the American Legion Hall, I believe the town owns a lot there, and if you go by there, Belmont Avenue, you're familiar with Belmont Avenue, right? There's always weeds growing there, and the American Legion complains to the town. The town's really good about going and taking the weeds and the saplings out, and they clean it up. Now, when you go into that parking lot, what do you see? You see any weeds grow, any healthy weeds there? Nope, any saplings? There's nothing growing there on the dirt. There's maybe some brown scrub grass. And the reason I ask this question about the earthworms is that you expect people to live there with earthworms camp? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Higgins.
Would you like to answer that question?
Well, the plan is residential, so, yeah, we expect there to be some people there.
We have no further questions of the public from this witness, Mr. Gassion.
Please use your right hand, sir. Square to tell the truth, the law, truth, and not to tell the truth, nor be glad.
Yes, I do.
Please say your name, spell your name.
Sure, Craig Burgoye, P E R B G O.
Mr. Burgoye, what's your occupation?
Civil engineer, practicing as a traffic engineer.
And where do you maintain your practice?
Business addresses, two forty-five Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
And how long practicing in the field of traffic engineering?
I've been doing this for eighteen years.
From what school did you graduate, what degree did you obtain?
I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech.
Are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Just briefly give the board the benefit of some of your experience in traffic and parking plans?
Sure, I've been doing, working as a traffic engineer, as a sit for eighteen years. I've appeared on hundreds of occasions as an expert in traffic and parking, said boards. We didn't think here in Belvo many years ago, but I do this pretty much every night.
Are you a member of any societies, professional groups, can I do your work?
Yes, Institute of Transportation Engineers.
And you say you've done this almost every night?
Yeah.
You've been accepted as an expert in the field of traffic and parking?
We'll accept your, with this as an expert.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgoye, would you review the existing conditions?
Sure, I think by now the board's familiar with the site location, we've been discussing this for a while now. Belmont Avenue between Franklin Street and Bloomfield Avenue. We sort of focused our analysis on those two signalized intersections on both ends of Belmont Avenue. And what we've done is take traffic counts at those locations, looking at the weekday morning and weekday evening, peak hours. That's when you're gonna see the roadway has its highest traffic volumes, and when the site will generate its highest traffic volumes as well. So it kind of gives us a worst-case scenario. So we took counts at those two intersections between seven and nine on a weekday morning, and between four-thirty and six-thirty. And we isolate within those two two-hour windows the symbol busiest hours. We have the morning peak hour and the evening peak hour that we're taking a look at. At this location, the morning peak hour happened to occur at seven forty-five to eight forty-five in the morning, and the evening was five PM to six PM. And what we found was Belmont Avenue has a two-way traffic volume of about three hundred vehicles per hour in the morning and five hundred in the evening. That compares to Bloomfield Avenue, which is about fifteen hundred vehicles per hour, and Franklin Street's about twelve hundred vehicles per hour in the peak hour. So Belmont Street's got the lower volumes, obviously, the two main roads. But I think it suffers a little bit with that at those two intersections, because Bloomfield and Franklin get the majority of the green time, leaving Belmont with much less, much less green time because of those lower volumes. And that's sort of what we observed in the field, and in order to substantiate that, we prepared capacity analyses. We basically make a model of the roadway network. It's based on the traffic volumes that we counted, the number of lanes, traffic signal timing, and it's input into a computer software that gives us the average delay per vehicle at those locations, which is then ranges of those delays are related to a level of service. A being the best level of service, F being the worst or a failing condition. And in this case, those Belmont Avenue approaches to both of those signals is in the level of service D or E range. And again, it's not necessarily because there's so much volume, you just heard me say it, about one per unit's volume on that road as there are on the other two. It's really a function of that traffic signal timing, the two county roads get a lot more of green time. That sort of summarizes the existing conditions, that is, the existing site conditions, the stipulation, and what's on site that affects the existing off-site traffic conditions.
Do you have some additional information about the streets, like Belmont Avenue, Brookfield Avenue, anything further you want to comment?
As far as existing conditions, I think that...
Then we discuss the future conditions.
Sure. First thing we need to do is sort of build up the baseline of what we counted in terms of our traffic counts to what it would be like in the future. And New Jersey DOT publishes a two percent growth rate for roadways in this area, so we apply that growth rate, over, we apply, in this case, over a period of three years to what I counted, to what our traffic counts are going to give. What's the volume in the future of other area development potentially that could occur? The next step is to figure out how much traffic the development proposal is gonna generate. We do that with the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the ITE, they have a publication called Trip Generation, which gives us, it's a compilation essentially of traffic counts taken at various land uses around the country. We're able to use that data to project with this, with this particular development, we generate based on the size of a commercial space and the number of residential units. And that gives a baseline of traffic volumes expected at those uses in standalone site, basically in the middle of nowhere, in the middle of suburbia. Here, obviously, there's some factors that come into play that are meant to alter those ITE numbers. First thing that's most obvious is the mass transit. The intent of doing this residential portion of this development is obviously to attract tenants who want to use the light rail and use that mass transit, so that's gonna replace some of those vehicular trips. The second aspect is an internal interaction. You have commercial space on the site that presumably the residential tenants will be using. Obviously, there's grocery stores next to them, and they can walk to the grocery store. So that's gonna have some internal trips that are where a resident who didn't live on this site, that could, we even drive to the grocery store here, we're gonna walk. Same thing with the other commercial spaces, depending on what they turn out to be. And the last kind of phenomenon is that we have to take into account as well, it's called pass-by traffic. We have commercial space, particularly in a somewhat congested area like this part of the state is, a lot of the traffic that's generated by it is pulled in from the existing travel street. People are already driving on the roadway and just stopping by Bill for a coffee, if there's a coffee shop or whatever it happens to be. So they're not really impacting the adjacent intersections, they're just coming in and out of the driveway, because they already, already would have been on the roadway anyway. So based on the New Jersey transit data and ITE data, I can take into account all those factors, the mass transit, the internal trips, and the pass-by traffic, and come up with a picture of what traffic generation would look like for this site in particular, based on its location and the other uses that are on the site. And then I'd be able to take that volume, transpose it onto those grown volumes that I counted, I grew with the two percent growth rate for three years, and reanalyze those intersections, considering both with and without our proposed development. One, without, we consider the, call it the no-build condition, with is the build condition. I rerun that simulation model again, check the levels of service again, and compare the two. And in this case, between the no-build and build conditions, there's no change in the levels of service, we're still in that D to E range. There's an increase in the delay slightly, but not to the point where it changes that level of service. So there's enough capacity out there to handle this additional traffic without creating an undue or noticeable increase in delay, in terms of future conditions.
You want to get any specific counts, would you, or do what would care?
I can, just so you know, the trip generation numbers that I'm referring to, a trip is a vehicle either entering or exiting. Based on the projections that I mentioned before, we have a total of sixty-nine trips in the morning peak hour and a hundred and thirty-seven in the evening peak hour. Add it on top of that, and as I said, three hundred to five hundred on Belmont, and fifteen hundred to twelve hundred on Franklin Street.
And you've indicated the level of service is still good on all these intersection?
The level of service is acceptable, to the lower range, I mean, in the busiest time period, the peak hour, obviously, there's some congestion, but what happened when this development goes in is when I've been paid worse, and I've been increased to the point where it changes the level of service at any of the, at any of the intersections. Oh, and I should mention, like, the site driveways, we do the same analysis for the proposed site driveways, and they all operate at good levels of service.
Would you review the findings and conclusions?
Sure, I mean, from a traffic impact perspective, and looking at it strictly as a traffic engineer, this is the perfect development for the site. It's a great use for the site. You'd wanna put residential near mass transit, obviously, it's good planning, it makes sense in a, from a traffic perspective, it reduces vehicle trips. And often when I do these multi-family developments near train stations, everybody's, well, everybody still has to go to the grocery store, so they're still gonna be driving. Well, here, this particular location, we have a supermarket on the site, and two other retail uses that are obviously gonna be tailored towards what the residents like. So from a traffic perspective, this is, this is ideal for this location. It's not gonna necessarily bring in too much new people from far and wide, and it's gonna take advantage of the existing train station, what's there, it's an existing migration station.
I think there were some questions, you mean, the board members or interested citizens about immigration, could you just review that, please?
Sure. Sure. We have, I'll start from left to right on the pan, this is Exhibit A to B, which is a rendering of the site. The, the existing driveway behind the supermarket that's going to serve the truck circulation, deliveries from the supermarket primarily. The second access point is along the front drive aisle of the, of the supermarket primarily, obviously, there's also people destined to this retail building. Next driveway would be a combination of, I suppose, the retail and the ground floor of the L-shaped building, the residential portion of it. Then you have a fourth driveway that would likely be certain book, book, brown floor commercial spaces in both the residential buildings. And then obviously, this last driveway, it is for PSEG access and road parking for the residential building primarily, it would be residence only. So you have, you have a good dispersion of the traffic out onto Belmont, you're not concentrating it all in any one location, which I think works well, and you have dispersion of that traffic volume that I mentioned before, going left and right to the two intersections, so you're not really concentrating the traffic that's happening in that location.
I have no further questions, Mr. Wolf.
Any board members? Just from your statements, you feel that even building this building as proposed cannot have a negative impact or drop the level of service on Belmont Avenue?
It won't drop in the level, it won't have a negative impact such that it drops the level of service. Obviously, there's going to be more traffic, it's not going to fix the existing problem, but it's not going to make the news if it were worse.
Is there anything you could suggest to, to enhance the flow of traffic at that intersection?
Like I said, it's really a function of how much green time needs to be provided to the dangers of car barriers, that it's, when there's a count, there's counting rules. I mean, sure, if you want to make Belmont Avenue work better, then you can back Bloomfield Avenue up for miles.
The traffic lights are tied in with, with the light rail, so I know that can't be, can't be touched.
And the good thing, it's, it's one block, it's a finite amount of development that can occur there, so in this case, we have the ability to put this in without detracting those levels of service.
Are there going to be restrictions on turns left or rights, either way?
There, there don't need to be, the site visibility is good, and I prefer to be able to disperse the traffic to the two intersections.
There's no street parking along that, is there street parking on Belmont?
There is.
The sites are good.
Any other members have questions for this witness? If not, we'll ask the public. Does anybody have any questions for this witness? Ms. Fleishman?
Fleishman, 132 Franklin Street. Have your studies brought into consideration the fire department, because eventually that fire department will be reopening on Franklin? Have the, right, councilman?
Yes, it will be.
Have you brought that into, like, when the truck comes out, you know, because no one has any control, obviously, when the fire department's going to happen to come in and out. But have you brought that into your considerations? Because you're saying you've, you know, looked at the traffic, you've looked at cars, you've looked at the subway, but did you remember to bring the fire department and bringing the trucks going down Belmont?
Well, the fire department, I did add a growth rate to take into account things like that, small volumes, the fire department's not going to generate substantial traffic volumes. Obviously, at the times when there's an emergency, that's a disruption, but that's going to happen whether or not this project's here or not. And those sorts of things happen all the time, I get to take into account if there's a car accident, that meteor fell on the road, and I'm saying, typical daily conditions, the fire department is not going to be a typical daily occurrence, but it does have the same impact as a good, good recovery department.
Mr. Fleishman brings up a good point about the, the firehouse. I mean, I don't think Belmont Avenue's going to affect it at all, it's Franklin Street. Maybe Mr. Kennedy, when, before the fire department reopens, maybe you guys could put a light there, so that when people are backed up from the intersection, they don't stop in front of the, the firehouse.
I'll bring it up to the council.
Thank you.
Emergency signal with the fire department?
Yeah, so you don't block the driveway of the firehouse. Mr. Fleishman?
Frank Fleishman, 132 Franklin Street. So you did a study of Belmont Avenue, beginning at Bloomfield Avenue and the terminus, oh, the intersection of Franklin Street and Belmont, correct?
Yeah, we focused on those two intersections. I know there are a few in between the primary impacts. Obviously, people going in and out of this are going to use those.
Okay. When did you do this study, approximately?
We went from 7:00 o'clock to 9:00 in the morning, and 4:30 to 6:30 in the evening.
Okay. All right, and I, I mean, I'm sorry, when I, when I say when, how long was the study, like, in days or?
It was four days, we were out there four days.
Okay, and was that recently, was it this year, was it last year?
September 2016.
If I may ask, maybe you went over this, did you use October technology to do the count, or you, was it based on computer models? How did, you know, how did you, how'd you do the traffic count, I guess is my question?
You, you sit out there and with a board, a count board, it's an electronic board, and count the vehicles and the turning movements, who turns left, right, and whatnot, and that's broken down into 15-minute increments. So the highest four consecutive 15-minute increments, that's the business time.
That explains why I didn't see, like, the little lines in the road, I thought, you know, the, how the police department does their traps, as you have, like, the danger bump.
Right, the type of traffic recorded, council, we do those too, but in this case, I needed to know who turned which direction.
You're also aware, I'm sure, that there is a, a car, a commercial car lot on, on that road, on Belmont Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Now, at least a couple of times a week, you have car carriers that park, at least temporarily on that street. Did you take that into account, or did you see that, I guess, during your study?
I don't specifically remember seeing a car carrier parked out there, but I'm sure it happens.
All right, I mean, in your experience, do you think that would be potentially a traffic issue?
If there's a parking lane there, so as long as two-way traffic can get by, then you know, if you're blocking the live travel, and that's the least...
Yeah, maybe, how big is that road, like, width-wise?
Oh, if I had the, I don't know specifically, so I don't know that much.
Would you agree it's basically a two, like, like, a one-lane road going each way?
Yes, it's one lane each way.
I'm sure we've done studies like this before, have you ever had a, had a development, you know, done a study for a development like this on that kind of a road?
Yes, many, many times.
And you've already, is it the conclusion that you have right now, the same one you've essentially come up with on those other developments?
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank Antoni?
Just one question, sir. The, you said you did 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and 4:30 and 6:30 p.m.?
Yes.
You said you did it on weekdays, correct?
Yes.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, which is not a Monday. Monday and Thursday, you didn't do it on Saturday or Sunday?
No.
One quick question. The scope of your work, do you also include various turning radii, or are you just looking at, at vehicle counts?
In terms of the site plan?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we look at the terms, the guy, and advise the synergy there, if there's any issues.
I had to ask a question at the last hearing dealing with turning radii, which was my concern about accessibility on the part of emergency vehicles in the triangular region between the two new proposed buildings, where that courtyard is going. And I was told that there was going to be some sort of breakaway gate, and that the study had been done to guarantee that there was sufficient width and distance to get in there. But a couple of days after that hearing, and we have Matt Kadasha, the Baltimore Times' reporter, his article indicated that the Belville Fire Department hadn't yet contributed to their, that analysis to verify that there was sufficient distance and accessibility between those, those two buildings. So I just would like to know, have you, have you engaged our fire department to make sure that with their current vehicles and equipment, that they can get in between those two buildings? God forbid that there's a need to address a fire.
I'm familiar with that, if I can answer. I have, we can answer questions, but we submitted a plan to Mr. Hans, Mr. Hans did a review and sent us a letter with one concern he has, and Mr. Byron is going to testify as to that after this witness is done.
All right.
One, the term you were concerned about, Mr. Hans had a concern about the same term.
All right, thank you, thank you. Any other members of the public have a question on this witness? If not, Mr. Gashon, if you'd like to...
Mr. Byron. Mr. Byron, you recall, you've been sworn in?
Yes.
And you have an opportunity to review the response from the Belville Fire Inspector between him?
Yes.
And can you tell the board with regard to that letter, what he asked you to do, and the results of what you did?
Certainly. Good evening again.
So as was requested at the last hearing, was, um...
Mr. Gashon, you're going to submit that, that letter?
Sure, I got a copy.
Mr. DiLorenzo, any suggestions?
Bob.
We got it, Bob.
He's got it.
We got it.
Is the letter dated, Mr. DiLorenzo, is the letter dated April 5th, you have it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that get marked as an exhibit?
Mark, what is it, A1 with today's date?
The letter's A1?
I'm going to make this...
That's probably a report from the...
I don't know.
What do you want to do?
Tell me.
We'll take it as an exhibit, so.
All right. So if that's going to be A1 with today's date, then I'm going to refer to, I'm going to mark as Exhibit A2 with today's date, 4/12/2018. This is a drawing that was prepared by our office, Dresner Robb, and is titled "Fire Truck Circulation Plan," and it is also dated April 11th, 2018. So as was discussed prior hearing, there was a doubt having the fire department review the application to see if they had any concerns or comments. We did receive a letter back, and the only comment that was raised was in regards to a fire truck making circulation on the westerly side of Building A, which is the long rectangular Using a profile that's generated on the computer, we have inputted a fire truck into this area, and as you can see through the hatching, that the fire truck can safely make a left-hand turn circulation around the building without impeding or imposing it in any of the parking areas or over any of the curb lines. And then just to address the question from the audience earlier in regards to circulation between the buildings, I cannot testify to the architectural element of separation, but I'm sure that the licensed architect can specify that there is adequate protection between the two buildings, based on their fire code review. And with respect to circulation, as I had stated at the last hearing, there is a reinforced grass paving system that's provided between the two buildings that will allow for a fire truck or any other emergency vehicle to access between buildings.
There was a question a board member raised about snowplows between the buildings. I believe there's an emergency access in between the buildings, can you review how that would be cleared for emergency purposes if there were a snowstorm that took place?
Certainly, as with any type of property maintenance, where snow removal will be taken from sidewalk areas, it's going to be a means and methods determined by the property owner, but snow will be removed from that area to allow for emergency vehicles to access through there in snow conditions.
I have no further questions, Mr. Wolf.
Any board members, questions on this witness?
Two things. With respect to the fire department, you were also supposed to get back to us with the recommendation for fire hydrants?
Sort of request was from the applicant, submitted to the fire official to review for compliance and review comments, just as you would with the engineer or planner, and the only comment that did come back from the fire department was with respect to the turning maneuver on the northwest corner of Building A.
So there's no recommendation of fire hydrants in the area?
Well, there's no comment from the fire department regarding that, and as stated in the prior hearing, there are existing fire hydrants along Belmont Avenue, as well as each building will be equipped with fire stand pipes or fire department connections, as you see in a lot of new buildings.
Mr. Herms, with regard to fire hydrants, could you clear it up, or like, where they're going to be?
I think when, when, when they come in for their permits and stuff, it's like, right, they might need stand pipes and straight-to-straight system and that, so all that needs reviewed at that point, at that point.
Mr. Walsh, I think you made recommendations for the fire...
They come to your place? Yes, my other comment, as I was talking with your environmental consultant about the flush curb.
That's a great question.
Because you said there, there was a flush curb.
I certainly, I certainly understand your question, and I'll refer him back to Exhibit A3 from the prior hearing, which is titled "Rendered Site and Landscape Plan." On the westerly portion of the property, we talked about at the prior hearing that there's a proposed carport area that has some parking beneath it, and we are proposing that the curb on that area be a flush curb. And if you can imagine that the way stormwater management is taken care of on a site, is you have high points and you have low points. At the high points, water runs in one direction or the other, at the low points, that's where the water gets collected. So just referring to these stalls on the westerly side of the last bank of stalls, there's actually a small ridge line that's only taking a very small area of the pavement and diverting it towards that grassy area. That grassy area slopes down to an inlet, which then connects to the sub-circus drainage system. The whole intention of that is not for the purposes of recharging any type of water, it's just to help reduce the peak flow, it just, grass slows the water down running through it. So it's just to reduce the intensity of the rainwater that's going to get conveyed into the system.
So that water going up to the grass will not actually go and exasperate the groundwater problem?
That's correct, that's, that's our, that's our opinion, that it's not going to exasperate.
Well, that's my concern.
Yep, and, and that's a legitimate concern, and that's the purposes of us asking for the waiver of providing groundwater recharge requirements from the DEP standards. The DEP has very specific standards and criteria that you need to recharge a certain amount of volume of water over the entire site. Because of the conditions that were discussed previously with the environmental, that's why we've asked for that waiver. But the minor area that's going to flow over this grass is not going to exasperate any of that groundwater condition.
Well, my other concern is I don't want the contamination to reach up, because that area is also where you have the bicycle racks and the dog park.
Well, the bicycle area and the dog park are actually upgrading of this low-lying area, and when we say low-lying area, I'm not talking about an area that drops down six or eight feet, we're talking, you know, a one-foot drop in the grade just to create a shallow low point. So you're, it's not so excessive that it's going to encounter groundwater, nor would any type of groundwater fluctuation rise above the grid in that area.
Any other members have questions? Anybody in the public have questions? Mr. Trans Antoni?
Yes, Mr. Byron, at the last meeting, you said that the center triangle, recreation or rest area there?
Yes, sir.
Question was asked, will fire trucks be able to enter there, and I don't know, did you, or did you, said there's going to be a breakaway fence?
It's not, it's, there is a fence, and again, I'm referring to Exhibit A3, and with the laser pointer, I'm pointing on the easterly side between Buildings A and B, which is the rectangular and the L-shaped building, for the board members are indicating this area here. This is a swing gate... Uh, this is a swing gate, so it's intended that that gate will swing and be wide enough that fire trucks can get through that area. Um, that gate will be closed, um, whether it's equipped with a lock that the fire department cuts, or whether the fire department puts on there what's called a lock box, which you see on a lot of commercial areas, which has a key that provides access to the gate, but there will be no restriction from the fire department opening that gate up and getting access between the two buildings.
And typically, a five-story building is approximately 70, 75 feet tall, what we're talking about here?
I can't speculate as to what the height.
Well, assuming, uh, it's a five-story building, so you're going to need a ladder truck, and you're going to fire, um, but the ladder truck needs approximately 24 to 25 feet to put it out directly, it's out to staple up, but we're going to have that space in that little triangle, but the truck has to get in, they have to fire fight at the inside of those buildings.
Still referring, uh, to exhibit A3, you will see that there are two dashed lines that represent an aisle, that is a reinforced, reinforcement that gets placed under the ground, made of high-density polyethylene, a plastic, um, that supports traffic load. That high-density polyethylene mat, uh, is actually 24 feet wide, um, and again, this has been submitted for review by both the municipal engineer, it's also been submitted for review by the fire official, neither entity has come back to make comment on that, and again, there's still, should the board find approval, these applications still need to go in for a building permit, and then there's another level of review where should there other, be another concern brought up, it can be addressed at that time.
So that, you're saying that green head through there, 24 feet wide, and there's no swing playgrounds, no tables, picnic areas anywhere in that area?
I can tell you that as of right now, there's no playground in there, there is some recreational area, and that will be, uh, discussed by the landscape board.
Does that plan show the recreation?
It shows conceptual locations of the recreational areas, and those, and those recreational areas, um, are within the area that's restricted to the tenants.
David, is there any more, any more thought to, uh, recycling? Five stories of buildings, there's only a trash, uh, you know?
I, I'm going to, that was addressed at the last hearing, there is a internal building management plan that will handle the trash and the recycling.
Where will the bike racks be?
Uh, there are, there is a proposed bike depot area on the westerly end of the properties adjacent to the dog park.
And what about electric cars?
Charging stations? This is now getting beyond the scope, the, I always brought it back for a limited purpose, you can understand across examine, but you go to all three of these tests.
Would another expert be able to answer those questions?
Which question, I'm sorry?
Charging stations, and even for the residents, I thought he was an engineer for the building as well.
He's the engineer for this site, and he was already on a witness stand and had an opportunity to cross.
So the architect that would know about the, uh, the, like, the five...
Uh, is there any planes that have charging stations for electric cars at this point?
Yes.
I think that's his question.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Any other questions, Mr. Flashen?
Can you clarify the swing gate, and if I understood you, the swing gate is going to be locked, and so in theory, the fire department would have to get off the truck, break the lock to get in or unlock it? Does that make any sense?
That's standard practice, yes.
By whose standards, the fire department's or...?
Ma'am, it's no different than a fireman entering a building that's on fire, they still have to get through a doorway, or a locked doorway, or a locked door.
Yeah, but they generally don't have a lock on a fence, don't, please, you know, my late father-in-law was a firefighter for 30 years, my brother's a firefighter, so don't tell me how firefighters get into a building, okay? Don't you dare say, kick, you know, it's a building, no, you're telling, you're saying it's a locked fence.
That's correct.
Okay, where is it written, or where is it stipulated that a fence for the fire department to get in should be locked? Where is...
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm not saying that it has to be locked, it's the plan that it is locked, and if you go to any public field, you'll see that baseball fields, football fields, et cetera, where they have a double swing gate where access vehicles can get in during those events, those gates are unlocked and they're opened up, or in case of an emergency where they need to create an emergency landing zone or similar situations where helicopters, they cut the gate open, and that's how they access to people.
Okay, but we're not talking about a football field, we're talking about a fence.
Mr. Flashen, I think it's a life and death situation, and the fire department determines it, they'll just break the gate.
Oh, and...
If seconds matter, I think it's, it'll be designed where you can just drive through it and, uh, the landlord would replace it. I don't see that as an issue.
I, I hope so, because again, you know, fire, every second counts.
Yep, I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't it more likely that an ambulance would need access to get in there?
Sorry, I can't speculate as to what's more likely, whether it's a fire truck or an ambulance, but I can tell you is that the area has been designed to adequately handle an emergency vehicle regardless of whether it's a police car, fire truck, or ambulance.
But you don't know about a hook and ladder truck?
The, the, the question has been asked and answered regardless of what it is, it's an emergency vehicle, that can access through that area.
Do we have any further questions? If not, we're going to move on to our next witness. How many more witnesses do we have?
Just one, just that, last witness.
Point of order is five minutes to 10. I'll be fine here.
Yes, that's the correct time.
Let me just get the board ready again.
Yeah.
Would anyone object if I just turn this more to the side so I have one set of boards and not two?
Right, just give us one minute, please.
Oh, apologies, you shut it, it would be a time to speak. Well, I don't know what...
It was. I also have handouts of a pretty crazy...
Okay, hold on, wait one second.
Go to place you under oath, when you're ready.
I'm ready. Hi.
Please say your name for the record.
Mark Anthony Vizzini, BI, ZZ, IANA.
Can you tell us what's your business address?
55 Lane Road, Fairfield, New Jersey.
And your occupation?
I'm a licensed landscape architect.
And are you licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am licensed for the last 17 years in New Jersey, I've been practicing for 23 years, I'm also licensed in New York.
Well, except your witness has an experience.
Thank you. What is your role in this project?
I oversaw the development of the landscape and lighting plans for the project.
And review the street and parking lot?
Uh, so the plan is fully compliant with the, uh, the proposed development is in compliance with the redevelopment plan. Uh, one of the first items we needed to address was any project over 50, with more than 50 feet of street frontage, we needed to provide street trees along the front. Uh, Belmont Avenue, there were existing trees, uh, those are shown in the light gray, and then, uh, the darker trees are the ones we filled in to replace dead, or dead trees or trees that have been removed. Uh, in addition, there was also a buffer required along Belmont Avenue for 5 feet, uh, which we provided, it's landscape with, uh, evergreen shrubs, getting the minimum height requirement, uh, for the ordinance. Uh, in addition, along Belmont Avenue, parking, the existing parking used to extend actually into the city's properties, we've now pulled our development back, so in addition to our 5-foot, there's about four, four-and-a-half-foot, uh, area which will top dress in seed and put lawn there, so it was actually like a 9, 9-and-a-half-foot buffer between the edge of the parking. Regarding the parking, uh, the ordinance required, uh, one tree for every 10 spaces, we, uh, more than complied with that, so we would have needed 40 trees, we're actually providing 58, uh, they're scattered throughout the, uh, the parking areas. They consist of red maples, honey locusts, willow oaks, hack berries, sorry, I'm getting confused of who I got to face here. Um, so we more than complied, there was also a minimum area requirement per tree, we needed 75 square feet per tree, we meet that minimum requirement. Throughout the rest of the area, there was also a bumper planting along the rail yards, we have eight-foot-high evergreen shrubs, uh, we also provide a double row of evergreen trees, uh, adjacent to the, uh, PSC and G property, and again, I'm referring to board A3, that was previously entered, uh, previously entered into evidence.
Would you review, continue to review the general landscape features?
Yes, alright, uh, two things, uh, I just want to get out of the way, we meet the requirement, we have a one-year guarantee on the plant material, uh, we're going to limb the trees up to seven feet, these are all requirements in the redevelopment plan, uh, all plant material is non-invasive, that was in the redevelopment plan, and about half the plant material are native to New Jersey, the rest are adapted to New Jersey. The project provides, uh, concrete sidewalks around all of the residential buildings, we're also providing, uh, new walkway connection between the residential building and the retail, which Bob Byron testified to earlier, all the landscape, all the islands in the parking lot will be landscaped with evergreen ground covers or the perennials, ornamental grasses, we kept them low, stuff that kind of died back in the winter because in some areas you put some snow load, it snows. Uh, we have a open lawn area up in the, uh, westerly portion of the property, again, some area that could be used for some passive recreation, we provided a very detailed, uh, landscape courtyard between the two buildings, they'll have, uh, brick paved sidewalks, uh, we provided five, uh, plaza areas that range in size from 15-foot diameter to 30-foot diameter, we anticipate some outdoor dining areas, passive seating areas, uh, maybe a fire pit and whatnot, that's all going to be, uh, fine-tuned as we go through the development, but those areas have been divided. Those areas are, by the way, are outside of the 24-foot emergency regress, that area, with the exception of the sidewalks that periodically cross, has been kept clear for the fire, everything else will be outside. The central lawn will be used again for passive recreation, throwing a ball around or just to look very nice, uh, so we think we gave a nice, uh, atmosphere for the tenants, again, it is going to be fenced, there'll be pedestrian gates, and then there'll be two, uh, on each side, there'll be two, uh, 20-foot-wide double swing gate, so, uh, it'll be more than wide enough for the emergency vehicles to...
Are you talking about the retail entry plaza?
Yeah, so what we did is we provided some expanded, uh, paving areas in front of the retail, uh, they'll be paved with brick pavers, we left some areas, depending on what tenant goes in, they could put some outdoor seating or tables and chairs just to add to that feel and, uh, enhance the retail space.
Is there a dog park?
Yes, up in the westerly portion, there is a, uh, 40-foot dog park, I believe, is the area, that'll be fenced in with a 5-foot-high fence, there are also some, uh, we, Bob had previously mentioned, there are a couple of carports, they will have green roofs, an extensive green roof on top, and what an extensive green roof means, it's a shallow soil requirement, they're planted primarily with seedum plants, which require very little water, typically they're plants found above the tree lines in the mountains, grown out of the cracks and rocks, so they, they can survive in environments without a lot of water.
Are there a bar, a bike rack?
Yes, there is a, uh, a bike depot or a bike, sorry, the bike lockers, uh, located directly adjacent to the bike, uh, to the dog park and between the carports.
Would you review the lighting?
Yes, so we provided LED lighting, which is energy-efficient lighting, typically about 40 or more percent more energy-efficient than your standard high-intensity discharge. No one's making the high-intensity discharge lights anymore, so it's almost an obsolete question, everything is LED, um, in the parking lot area, so we have a couple of different zones. The parking lot areas will have a, a LED shoebox type light, about 20 feet high, uh, in this main portion, we'll have dual fixtures or a double-headed fixture with a, uh, show you here, you can see it a little better, I'm not a fan of this. This is the drawing C701, it was submitted as part of the site plan application, so it's not a new drawing, is that going to be entered, or?
It already has been.
So you can see, we provided a shoebox lighting in the middle, along the perimeter, we went with a Type III distribution, which throws the light wider instead of further, and, uh, that's provided along all the perimeters of the parking, um, the central courtyard, we dropped the height of the lights down with a 10-foot decorative post-top light, again, it's LED, and we're also providing some building-mounted LED lights, uh, to pick up the light levels on the sidewalk. Along the existing, uh, retail center, we did add some new building-mounted LED lights to be more energy-efficient and replace the current lighting that's on the floor.
Did you have an opportunity to review the report from Mr. Hurst, the consulting engineer?
Yes.
You had any comments with regard to that report?
Yes, we are going to provide irrigation for the landscape, it's all the landscaping will be irrigated, uh, there was a question about site triangles, we think we're okay, but we will add the site triangles onto the plan to confirm it, and if there's any discrepancy with the height of the landscape, it will make the adjustment to drop it to let the ground cover, but I think we're okay.
Any further comments on Mr. Hurst's report?
Uh, well, some question on the lighting, we'd like to keep the lighting where we stand in the parking areas, there was a, an incorrect notice to the footing for the lighting that's in these parking areas, it was noted to have the foundation that wasn't raised above the parking to be protected from vehicles, we're going to correct that, those lights will sit on a two- or three-foot-high concrete pedestal, we prefer to keep them where they are, we think we have very good light distribution.
No further questions, this witness, Mr. Chairman.
In your professional opinion, is there enough green space for this project?
Yes, yeah, this is, uh, more than adequate, I think it's about 15,000 square feet, uh, five different areas, they'll have a mix of uses that they think use. In addition, there's also an outdoor rooftop terrace for the residents as well.
Any other members have questions of this witness? Not anybody in the public have questions for this witness? Mr. Frantantoni?
One, uh, the Belmont Avenue, trees are all big, perfect, what kind of type of trees are there?
There are a bunch of, uh, calorie pears, and then towards the end it gets down to a cherry, uh, some quanzon cherries.
Cherry blossom?
Uh, I believe quanzon cherries.
I would object to that, uh, we had double planted, uh, 5,000 cherry blossom trees over, over town, on a contract, my ladder, my rack, those are really place, actually, I go do John Bellos, camp park, these, these trees don't grow that high, and I don't think they're these long, they're beautiful trees, they're partial inside, but at the curb, we need some that grows above 10 feet, the branches, because...
You were matching what was there, if the board wants us to consider a taller columnar version, I think we'd be open to that, but we were kind of matching and filling in what was there.
Well, I know you don't live in Belleville, but there's been a lot of controversy about the cherry blossom tree, 20, 20 over.
Well, most of them are, most of them are pears, until you get down to this end where they turn into cherries.
Because many of them have been removed, two and one from my, uh, one from my major with bugs, and they lift up the sidewalks, they need more air, they're growing apart, so I hope for that long, Belmont Avenue, you can change something that grows a little higher, and, and there's been a lot of controversy, uh, over the years, I think about 15, 20 years ago, they planted, uh, people, you can play with that, but I have to tell you, you can't park trucks, moving trucks, con, the delivery trucks, you got these trees, the branches are six feet, uh, tall.
Yeah, well, we, we're going to limb them up to seven feet, which is what the redevelopment plans is. plan is.
Any ginkgo trees?
No, we're not proposing any of those.
Any evergreens?
Yeah.
So where will the other evergreens be planted?
Yeah, so this is a row of evergreens?
What exhibit are you referring to?
Two A three.
Oh, yeah, on the owner's.
Correct. So these provide the visual markers.
But not through the compost?
Oh, no. We also do have some evergreens mixed into the courtyard, but some of this parking is open, so we provided some low evergreens and some trees to buffer the basement.
So hedges, shrubs.
Yeah.
Now, all of these trees, oh, you're putting in on the parking lot area there?
Yeah.
And also over there. How high are these trees gonna grow up?
Depending on the varieties, forty, fifty feet. Typically, in an urban environment, they don't get as tall or as fast.
And how deep will the roots go?
Typically, trees root in the top of three feet, twenty, twenty-four to thirty-six inches, unless you have a taproot, which specifically grows down. So they typically grow wider.
Because, you know, they testified before about a barrier.
Correct. So this is very common. A lot of my projects are in Jersey City, which most of Jersey City waterfront is historic fill, and this is a condition we do need to meet. So the bottom of the root ball will have to be placed twelve inches above the historic fill. And whether we excavate down so that we get the depth, or we raise the grade up, we'll have to set the bottom of the root ball twelve inches plus the cap, the barrier, the buffer barrier.
I just can't understand how it's gonna work, because it's six feet deep of polluted soil that's gonna have a cap on it. So I don't understand where the, where the tree is gonna be planted.
Some soil, in order to institute some of the controls or the buffer and barrier, we may have to remove some of the soil off-site to get that, or we have to bring the grade up. But it will be above, so we're, if this is the historic fill, we're gonna have to put a demarcation layer, just so this is the D-mark, it's typically like a snow fence, and then whatever the institutional controls, the...
Engineering.
For some different entities, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Where's the irrigation going to be?
Everything will be above the cap.
I mean, the irrigation is going to run, how's the pipes gonna run for the irrigation?
The pipes will run. Of course, the pipes in the winter will be blown out and turned off in the winter. They will be placed within the buffer and barrier.
So all, everything's gonna get to water?
Excuse me?
Everything, watering?
The plants will be watered.
And now, what about sodium chloride?
What about?
It kills plants.
Some salts, some plants are more sensitive to that. They're not, and the maintenance of the area, you know, we could work with the owner to work with an alternate to sodium.
The entire large parking lot there is gonna be...
But it's no different than any parking lot anywhere in the U.S. that has to deal with snow.
Most of them don't have trees, so this is...
Every parking lot, pretty much. I can't say every parking lot. Most parking lots have ordinance, most towns have ordinances that require trees in parking lots. I don't know that you're advocating that we remove the trees from the parking lot. They can handle, the trees that are specified can handle.
I just wonder if there's any way to keep the sodium chloride from killing the vegetation?
Instead, some material is more sensitive to others. We haven't selected that plant material. And if that's a maintenance issue, if we're over-salting, then that's, that's a problem.
Sodium chloride doesn't hurt the trees.
Then that's something that we can write into the maintenance program.
But it's more expensive, so it's something that'll be built into the program. So you're a landscape...
Landscape architect, yes.
So you know what kind of environment is needed to...
Yeah, the urban environment does provide a tougher environment than if it was grown in the field, but the plant material that we've selected is suited for this area or does well in this area.
Any other questions from the public?
No further witnesses, Mr. Chairman. My case is complete.
Our counsel, would you like to sum up first, or would you like the...
I'd rather wait until after.
Wait until after?
Citizen's story. Thank you.
Does anybody in the public have any comments at this time?
Yeah.
Mr. Frant Antoni.
Now, we're gonna square everyone in where you can make your own comments. Point of order, how late are we gonna go?
We're finished. Go ahead, Mr. Frant Antoni. If you have somewhere to go, you can leave. I mean, it's, you know, six hours of testimony so far.
And I've been here for you.
Good. Mr. Frant Antoni?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth will help you guys?
I do. Just on housekeeping, looking at the tape the last week, two weeks earlier, Mr. Conde made some statements before he heard all the witnesses that he fought this project. He sounded like he was a representative of the applicant, and I just wanted to put that on the record. It was conflict of interest and all. Now, this testimony here, that's the applicant, they seek a pilot for this. Pilots are killing this state, and I quote from the state control, this is my time for testimony, I can say whatever I want, Mr. Gascon.
You can, but this board has nothing to do with anybody. There's no application before this board has approved a pilot, nothing. That's all I would put in.
But it was stated that he may seek a pilot.
But it wouldn't be from this board.
Well, I have every right to say why this board should approve...
Can you just summon up Mr. Frant Antoni, please?
Pilots are heard in this name. This is the state controllers office, the boxer report. New Jersey's municipal tax abatement program is pulling critical funding away from schools and even hackberries to pick up their cost. And it's three or four pages of all the other detrimental things that tax pilots have looked. The other thing I'll address, because the council, no, Mr. Gascon, has to approve pilots, they're the ones. But we have a council member on the board, and I just bring it so the record shows on this case, too, the big clock thread complex in Eastern Oregon. They just went in there and they wanted a pilot, and they held it up a couple, the council held it up for a couple of years. The borough refused to grant one and finally got its way. They're doing a big development there without a pilot. And Bloomfield just got a big tax increase. My two sons are getting killed in Bloomfield. They both live in Bloomfield. And the Board of Education, President Schmidt, one of the reasons for the large increase, the raibles in town have been obliterated. There's a lot of building going on, she said, but it's the pilot programs and tax abatements. A lot of new development, but hardly any money is coming to the school district. So they heard us, so if this thing needs a pilot, and many of these projects, they say the pilot, the project's not viable unless we get a pilot. Well, then we don't need it. And just for the record, the initial one in there, we're not against. I and others agree, this is an area to be developed. One of your members, Ms. Shore, stayed publicly in a hearing. She agrees it's an area to be developed, but, and she very emphatically says, not for residential and not for schools. And that's what I agree. See, we get some manufacturing, commercial stuff on here. You're not gonna put people on there. Now, this is not ancient history. This is just from April 5th, 2018 newspaper. I've been following, I don't know if you people follow, Edgewater, it's called the Quanta site in Edgewater. Honeywell, it was a contaminated site. And ironically, the same thing, our environmental expert, it's got volatile carbons, arsenic, lead, hydrocarbons, all the same problems that they got here. Well, the EPA, the federal EPA, allowed Honeywell to cap the site, and that's why I asked if the expert knew what the pavement wave was. They allowed to cap the site, similar to here, that's why I asked your consultant, did you consider capping? Yeah. So they capped it. So what happens, nothing came up through the cap, but what happened? It went sideways and to the joiner of the property office, right? And it says here, the, with tons of, the, instead of removing the toxic and all, it led to a problem with vapor intrusion into the surrounding buildings. So that's why I asked all the experts if he's familiar with the east side of Belmont Avenue, all those houses there. We're gonna cap this site, we're gonna build concrete foundations and contain that stuff, but you're not gonna contain it, especially with a high water table. What's gonna happen? It's not gonna come up. It's gonna go sideways. Of course, the, in fact, there was a, the court case on Heckel Street, a resident sued for his property being contaminated by Edison property, and he won successfully. And that's Heckel Street, a block away. So imagine when all this thing is, this cap is on there, the contamination is going to go somewhere. And this is current. It's called the Quanta site over there, and they had to stop. The cap didn't work, so they were excavating it to now remove it, but there were gonna be all kinds of fumes, the neighbors, big complaints, and they had to stop the site. Again, not ancient history, this is an ongoing problem. The, in regards to the expert on the traffic congestion, this is from our old master plan we're rebuilding now, and it says that the, one of the problems in the reexamination rate report was traffic bottlenecks at key intersections. And then it goes down to a couple of Franklin Street, Belmont Avenue intersection, it's been studied by Essex County as part of the light rail improvements. This intersection still suffers from traffic congestion. This is current, this is from our planning board renewal. So the expert went there during the week. That's a little busy. Them stores do a lot of business on Saturday. I don't know if you've been there on Saturday. You go down Park, I think, Mr. Vannery, you know Dennis Waltier?
Mm-hmm.
I stopped there to see his mother's ill a couple of weeks ago on Saturday. When I left, you know where he lives, a couple hundred feet, I get to Belmont Avenue. I'm in Belmont Avenue, I get to Franklin. Sat there for four lights. Number one, the light rail, and you know, when the train crosses, that stops everything there. Nobody, like, I think, Mr. Walsh, somebody recommended that you leave space, or you did, for the fire department. Nobody follows those laws. Nobody gives you a break. Traffic bottles up, four lights, I just sat there. Nobody moved because the pecan baloney had blocked the box, and this is content, if you're in the area. I know you don't have a parking lot, but your business at the end of a dead-end street, you park in the street and you park in a tap property. But the rest of us, the rest of us have to park, but those are actual conditions. He should have gone there on Saturday, a very busy day, which the other expert testified, Saturday is the busiest shopping day of the week, right? And we got severe problems with the traffic on that intersection. The other issue is density. Back in the seventies, we were complaining, our density was twenty-five units per acre. A suburban town, we're complaining, this is becoming another inner city in Reno. We took action. We reduced the density to sixteen per acre. A few years later, we reduced it to twelve acres, so we could stay a nice suburban character. In all those years, if you look at our tax bills, and I got fifty-one years of tax bills, the relative tax increase is stable. The more development you get, like in Bloomfield, my son, you know, about ten years ago, seven thousand dollars in property taxes. They built all these high rises, all this new revenue and all, his taxes are now over eleven thousand dollars. So Holisland doesn't do anything to our tax base. It increases demand for services, and, and they don't pay their fair share of it. And like my two sons, again, this is personal, I'm not giving rhetoric, I have actual knowledge of this. My poor son bought a storing house, we restored it, and taxes almost doubled at this point. And that's not what this year's tax increase is doing. The Paramus rejected multifamily housing, and they approved a little one on a two-acre site, seventeen and a half units per acre, not twenty-five like this proposed one at all. The Cambridge Heights, everybody loved that, big development, you know what the density is there? Nine and a half units per acre. Essex Park on Franklin Avenue, right? It's always too dense. That's eighteen point five units per acre, not twenty-five. This, on this street, the narrow street like Belmont Avenue, twenty-five units an acre is too much. The other issue is this lightweight construction, all right? It, it's really, now, let me tell you, this just come out, the population density, by the, by the state level, we're only three point three square, we have a density of ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven people per square mile. However, if you take out our golf course and our Belleville Park, it equates more, because they're considered a whole three acres. Bloomfield, which appears is more dense, is only eight thousand, eight hundred per acre. We're the highest in Essex County, except Newark, and not much, because Newark is eleven thousand per acre. Nutley's eight thousand per acre, and Nutley so far won't allow these five-story monsters in their town. So this density is a real issue in all that. The lightweight construction, I think you all know the Avalon Fire in Edgewater, right? The same company, Avalon, in Maplewood, my wife and I, we had friends there, and next morning, we're up there, the thing burnt, that whole section burnt to the ground, it was under construction. This lightweight construction got stopped, and the construction, here's our construction code changer overdue. Our trend politicians are more paid for by the developers, so they won't change the code. You've got Vincent Freiento, the Assembly Majority Leader, who just resigned to take a good job, he introduced a bill to stop this lightweight construction. It, it's, it's a vent for fire to go right to and burn out. I mean, you got those trusses, all you gotta do, that bottom cord breaks at one point, everything collapses, like in the Edgewater Fire. Luckily, that was in the middle of the day. If it was at night, you would have had some deaths on that thing. But the thing burnt to the ground, it made a tissue paper. So that's another reason for not having. The schools, density, this farce about not bringing kids into the schools and all that, there's a state report that high-density apartments produces one child pupil for every fifteen units. This would be sixteen kids. However, some of this testimony is not right. Cambridge Heights, that was gonna be for empty nesters and people, you know, no kids in the school system. I think they estimated from ten to fifteen kids would be produced. Right away was seventy-three units. Newspaper article just about a year or two ago, Cambridge Heights now has a hundred and sixty-three students in their school system, not the ten to fifteen that were proposed.
Single-family homes in that development.
The East Gate Center on Center Street in Nutley, that was also proposed to be millennials that don't want kids and all that. Well, in just five years, they went from ten students to forty-one students in a five-year period. So this thing about, and again, I own several piece of property, you rent to a couple, a one-bedroom apartment, a hundred and nineteen-square-foot bedroom, which is nine by thirteen, and a nice young couple. Well, a year later, they had a kid. What did I do? Pull them out? A year later, they had another kid. They lived there for eight years, one-bedroom apartment with two kids, all right? Second-floor apartment. They had two girls in our school system, all right? And again, so when you say, oh, there's one-bedroom apartment, don't produce in there, you've got right up the street here, the Walter, I mean, the, of course, from Valley Bank, the big art deco apartment buildings. You've got customers come in my laundry, right? One-room apartments, three kids. Some of the old-time residents come in and complain about that. So there's fallacy, you know, in reality, the experts say, one-bedroom apartments, don't produce kids and all. They gotta get out in the trenches and look and see what's going on, all right?
You almost done, Mr. Frant Antoni?
Yeah, I'm almost done. The, so that's with the fire safety law. The final thing I have to say, the, today, just today, the record, I'll end it out with this. Bruce Lowery, the editor and columnist for the North Jersey Record, just read the first paragraph. "The question is why? Why must it all be for sale? New Jersey's waterways, its air, its land, and its undeveloped land. Nothing, it seems, is sacred when it comes to powerful developers and political types who see only green. Green, the color of money, that is, not the green to be found in New Jersey state parks or its ever..." or its ever-diminishing public spaces. Rather, the green coal, the green of cold, hard cash. New Jersey's political class doesn't just see the screen, they are blinded by it." So please, you people are planners, listen, plan for the proper future of Belleville on behalf of the thirty-six thousand people and residents and taxpayers that you represent, and not the developers who wanna take this cash. Now, one of these developers that proposed it, they just want to live in there, it's beautiful, they just drive, luxury apartments, you see signs all over, they don't want their payments anywhere near these places. So please, do what's right for the thing there. It's an area that needs developing, let's get some commercial manufacturers, something that, not residential, which is gonna be extremely detrimental to the township.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
To sum up.
Well, I'm sorry, again, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, or help you God?
Yes. Pamela Fleisch, one thirty-two Franklin Street. Gentlemen, to sum up, I think everyone can agree that the abandoned area does need to be redeveloped and, you know, made pretty, okay? I think the biggest stumbling block is the amount of units they're proposing, apartment buildings, or human apartments. If they would consider lowering the amount of property for the apartments, I don't think anybody in this room would have a problem with it. No one is against development, everyone wants Belleville to grow, the town council, the zoning board, the planning board, everyone's our level of little town to grow. I think the biggest issue is the number of apartments. If, again, if you guys can talk to them and, you know, come up with something, maybe from two thirty-two, maybe start at like one fifty, and then see what goes from there, you know, because there's other areas in Belleville that can be developed, you know, just consider that, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleisch, please, this morning.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, or help you God?
Yes, I did. Frank F. Fleisch, one thirty-two Franklin Street. Gentlemen, the developers have, and Mr. Gassillon have done their job in showing what this development would concealably be like. You, as a appointed board of this municipality, have the responsibility to ensure that response, that development is responsible, that it fits in with this municipality, that it doesn't negatively affect this town, and you're supposed to represent the residents of the, of the town. Honestly, looking at this, I don't think that this is a very good development. Um, I wouldn't be opposed if the, the developer was proposing simple commercial retail, um, to see how that would work, and perhaps after that, they could start investing perhaps in additional apartments if we felt that the infrastructure and the town could bear it, okay? If Belleville was bigger than honestly two point two square miles, because you have to take out the golf course and the parkland that we have, um, and if we didn't have almost thirty-six thousand people living on those, living on those two point two square miles, I would say, okay, maybe this is not a bad proposal. Um, some of the other things that I would, I would like to speak about is, you had a traffic expert speak here, um, doing the study of Belmont Avenue between Bloomfield Avenue and the Franklin Street intersection. My wife and I live about two hundred and fifty feet away from this proposed development at the corner of Franklin Street and Magnolia. We can say without reservation that the traffic situation there, leading into Belmont Avenue, down Franklin Street, that sort of thing, is, to put it lightly, atrocious, okay? I can say honestly, because I'm the one who drives in the family, um, there's been more than, um, more than a handful of times that I've had to park out in front of my building, because there really is not a lot of parking and stuff like that, I wouldn't say there's no parking, but it's very limited. But there have been times where I've opened my door just as some yahoo, and the other lane decides, well, I've gotten too impatient with waiting for the light, around the light to change, I'm going to shoot into the opposing lane and then go on to, on to Magnolia Street. I can't tell you how many times I've really gotten killed because of that, okay? So to say that there is not a traffic issue in that area is, it's inconceivable to me, and I can't imagine that this development will not add to that, even if we are going to be, um, even if the development is catering toward millennials and the younger generation, or even empty nesters to a certain extent, and I have something to say about that as well. The engineer, I'm sorry, the architect rather, spoke about how this is going to be constructed with lightweight, you know, lightweight wood, wood frame construction, right? Firefighters hate that, they can't stand it because it is an invitation to ablaze, as was seen in the Avalon projects in Edgewater and in, and in Maplewood. The reason why they call it matchstick construction is because it really takes a matchstick to basically ignite the whole thing, and it's fine you put sprinklers in, it's fine you have, you know, fire retardant doors, that sort of thing, that doesn't stop a fire, all it does is suppress it. You still need professionals to go in there and take care of it, and honestly, I don't need, I don't know what the fire chief's opinion is of this development, but I could probably tell you that the firefighters probably aren't too, too happy about it, simply because it's going to take a lot of manpower and a lot of equipment that honestly, the township, you know, I don't, I wouldn't say fails, but like I didn't even tell you, it lacks to a certain extent, is gonna be used to fight a major fire in a development like this. Let's talk about who this development is going to be aimed toward, okay? Millennials, okay? The idea that millennials are going to live here, use the light rail, you know, to go shopping, entertain, that sort of thing, it sounds great, but it's a gamble, it really is, and the other thing is that, the other possibility, and this is the justification that has been put together for the Avon, the Avon development in Bloomfield, is that, well, we'll have people who commute to New York to do this, which is all fine, okay? Bloomfield's a Midtown Direct, and that, you know, that, you know, that works out pretty well there. The problem is, is that I think we're gonna have a transportation crisis probably in the next few years, because we have to update our transportation, our rail transportation, the big gateway project they're talking about, okay? Right now, we have a federal government that is, to put it, to put it lightly hostile to New Jersey, and I'm not sure if we're gonna be getting the funding that we need to go ahead and improve transportation in New York and New Jersey, and if that happens, if our tra, if our, if our transportation infrastructure fails, something like this is gonna be a bust, on that alone, all right? The other thing I want to talk about millennials to a certain extent, the idea is that, well, something like this, they're gonna go over to, you know, to the Super Fresh and shop, and they're gonna have, they're gonna be a gym, they're gonna use that, that sort of thing. If you look at trends these days, our millennials are eating at Whole Foods, or Wegmans, or, or Trader Joe's, that's.